This meeting is now called to order. This is of the Milpitas. I will call the joint meeting of the Milpita City Council and the Housing Authority of April 1st, 2025 to order. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. City Council meeting is available for instant translation in over 50 languages with wordly, accessible via mobile phone, computer, and video displays by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner. So back to today's business. City Clerk Gazetta, please take roll call.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal. Councilmember Chula.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leanne.
Here.
Mayor Montano.
And I am here. Okay, so before we adjourn to closed session, Acting City Attorney Creach, please brief the public on the closed session items for today.
Thank you, Mayor. You have two items for closed session. The first is related to public employee appointment and hiring pursuant to Government Code Section 54957b1. The employee position is interim city manager. The second is conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency is designated representative is Kelly Parmley, Human Resources Director. Employee organizations is unrepresented. Position is interim city manager.
Thank you for that. And for the record, please note that Vice Mayor has, is here. And so before we adjourn to closed session, well, we already did that. So we're going to call for public comment on any items. Is there anyone from the public?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, so the time will be limited to two minutes if there's anyone that calls in or we see anybody else that runs in here and wants to talk to us. Okay, so now we will go ahead and adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
So, funding. Uh, Hunt, we're ready. This meeting is now in session, so right now it is 7:23. And we will, right now, we will do, um, let's see, Pledge of Allegiance.
Sorry, Mayor, I think it's report out for closed session.
I don't see that in here, but, okay. All right, well, do the closed session report out by our city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, there's nothing to report out this time.
Okay, thank you for that, so now let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and for the equal protection of all.
All right, thank you, so, and so now we have a tradition, we do an invocation, so Councilmember Chuah will provide the invocation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. We pray for our city, state, and national leaders, the elected officials, with wisdom, understanding, and knowledge. Grant the favors, increase their faith, and prepare them to pursue your excellence. Draw them to you to fulfill your purpose. Lastly, guide our city leaders to keep our residents, properties, businesses, and community safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for that, Councilmember Chuah. And so now we will do presentations, and if the council will join me down at the podium, and this will be for the Fair Housing Month proclamation, Cesar Chavez Day proclamation, and the Black April proclamation. So, welcome, everyone. The first one we will do will be the Fair Housing Month, and I understand there's no one here to, to accept this proclamation, however, I will still read it, and then we'll put it on the side. So, "This April, we recognize Fair Housing Month in the City of Melpitas. Safe and affordable housing is a foundation of strong, healthy, and inclusive communities. So as we mark the 57th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act and the 65th anniversary of the California's Fair Employment and Housing Act, we reaffirm our commitment to equal housing opportunity for all. We thank our partners like Project Sentinel for helping us educate and protect our residents. Let us continue to work together toward a future where everyone has access to a fair and equitable housing. So join me, Carmen Montano, and the Melpita City Council in proclaiming April 2025 as Fair Housing Month that celebrate diverse communities and strive for equal housing opportunities for all." And then now we're moving on to Cesar Chavez Day. On March 31st, 1927, in Yuma, Arizona, Cesar Chavez was born into adversity. Through his tireless efforts, he uplifted the voices of farmworkers fighting against injustice and exploitation. Today, we honor his legacy marked by sacrifice and unwavering commitment to nonviolent resistance. Let us commemorate his birthday by recommitting to the values of social justice and equality. As Mayor of Melpitas, I proclaim March 31st, 2025 as a day to honor the enduring spirit of Cesar Chavez Day. And we do have a holidays, which is really great, many of us, I think yesterday was a holiday, so many of our workers were off that day. So with that, I want to welcome... Right here, the Cesar Chavez, you want to come up here too? Okay. Right here. So we have this proclamation for you. And I want you to, I want you to say spewers.
Thank you, this is really an honor to accept this proclamation, and I just wanted to say a few words that when I was a teenager, my dad took us to meet Cesar Chavez, and he said, "I want you to meet this man, he's very important," and he took us, drove us to Delano, and we had no idea who he was, but we went, met him. Well, we should remember that now, and then we, when I was at Deansville College, we picketed Safeway every week, and there was, the farmworkers' office was down on First Street, so we'd get our picket signs and everything there, but we all always picketed Safeway. And, and I did get to meet Cesar Chavez at a fundraiser I went to back a long time ago, a long, long time ago. And then, after he died, we went to the procession, which was from Forty Acres to La Paz, and it was a march for his memorial services. So it's really an honor to accept the proclamation, and I wanted to give you something. And I'm giving this to you probably for your library, this is the first issue stamp. It's a little rugged, but it's been around, it's 27 years old, I believe.
Wow, that's nice. So we can hang it up somewhere at City Hall. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And tell people your name.
My name is Siwapi Lee Rose Amador.
Thank you. And we have to take a picture with us. Thank you. Thank you very much, Rose Amador, she's also very influential in the La Raza Roundtable, which is a regional group that is an advocate, advocacy group. Okay, now, we have, this is for Black April. So Hafan will accept this proclamation. So, "Black April signifies a somber chapter in history, reminding us of the anguish and sacrifice endured during the final days of the Vietnam War. As we commemorate this solemn occasion, let us honor the memory of those who faced displacement, persecution, and unimaginable hardships. Let us ensure that the lessons of Black April are never forgotten, standing in solidarity for peace, reconciliation, and human rights. Join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Melpita City Council in proclaiming April 2025 as Black April Month." And we have Hafan to accept this. I want you to say spewers.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone, good evening, Mayor, Melpitas, city council members, and especially Staff Chief. It is an honor for me to come here every year to accept this proclamation. As an activist for human rights, nothing else can make me happier than this. On behalf of my Vietnamese-American community, and especially for the people who die for the freedom of South Vietnam because of the fall of Saigon, on behalf of the 58,000 American soldiers who sacrificed their lives for our freedom before the fall of Saigon, and especially a lot of Vietnamese soldiers who die for the freedom. Freedom is not for free. Freedom is a right, a human right, that we should appreciate. We should make it the most valuable right in the world, not just for our country. I would like to have this opportunity to show my gratitude to everyone who has sacrificed, who has thought about us. For being here 50 years, it's not easy for us. But we appreciate this country for giving us a chance to live in the freedom, in freedom that we served this country for 50 years. to live in the freedom, in freedom that we served this country for 50 years. I would like to have also a statement that I have not done so, that anywhere in this city of Milpitas, anywhere in San Jose City, if we see the communist government flag anywhere, we will go there and politely, nonviolently, we're gonna remove. Because we stay away from them, then we asking for them to stay away from us. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Hafan, and I love, I love what you said, freedom is not for free, I love that. Won't forget that, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming to the City Hall. So now let's move on to the public forum, members of the public are invited to speak on any item that is not, does not appear on today's agenda. So please note that oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. Public forum will be limited to two minutes. Call for speakers, if there are any speakers.
I have a public speaker card from Voltaire Montemayor.
Okay, Mr. Montemayor, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, City Manager, Staff, Voltaire Montemayor of Milpitas. Here, follow up on the invocation, I like the invocation, thank you. That's encouragement for us here in the proclamations. Yeah, fair housing includes businesses, a lot of business struggling. I don't want to touch the word tariff, but I will, but for kind of two sentences. The Cesar Chavez, yeah, there was a joint effort with the first Filipino group in America during those days. At least we have Buena Park, Leon Manong's, and it's also with this dedication for the rights of the laborers. And then this one or yeah, the Philkag helped the America and the Vietnamese people fighting for rights of the Vietnamese during those war, the Philippine Civil Action Group, and a lot of casualties. And yeah, for freedom, I think it's, it has to be considered the hard, the hard work, the hard fault. Now, I was saying to touch tariff, yeah, I, it seems it's really chaotic on all sides now, but we should be patient, and we'll do what we can, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Montemayor. And so now, moving on to conflict of interest and campaign contributions, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, I asked the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara Diou.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lam.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
And I am none.
I further asked the mayor and each council member whether to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the past 12 months from any parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from the development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara Diou.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lam.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
And I am none.
Let the record reflect no reported conflicts, thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and so now the Milpitas City Code of Conduct. I will read this, be respectful and courteous, words, tone, and body language do matter. Model stability, avoid surprises, praise publicly and criticize privately, focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Okay, now moving on to the approval of the agenda. If, does anyone have any changes to make on the agenda? If I don't see any, then it's call for a motion and a second. We have, it was moved by Councilmember Chua and seconded by I think I saw Hanlin, and then was seconded by Hanlin, did you, did you second this, and seconded by Councilmember Hanlin. Okay, so now let's call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara Diou.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye.
Thank you, and next we'll do the consent calendar. So staff, do you have any changes or comments for the consent calendar?
No comments or changes, Mayor, thank you.
Anyone from the council? And seeing none, that's, we have Councilmember Chua here. To pull C5, please. Okay, we have C5 being pulled. Any other ones? Not, just ask for a motion and a second.
Mayor, you need public comment.
Public comment for the consent calendar.
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move, move on for, to accept the consent calendar, or to vote on the consent calendar. Oh, we haven't made a motion, nevermind, we have, I need a motion to accept the consent calendar, and a second.
Motion.
We have Councilmember Barbara Diou, I mean Vice Mayor.
Move to accept consent calendar with the exclusion of item number five, C5.
Okay, and then we have a second by Councilmember Chua.
It's Councilmember Leanne.
Oh, Councilmember Leanne. And so now we will take, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara Diou.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye.
All right, now we're moving on to public hearings, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, first public hearing is for a bingo license at the Barbara Lee Senior Center, the applicant is the city, and our city clerk Suzanne Guzzetta will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As was referred to staff back in November 2023, we're bringing forward the application for the bingo license for the Barbara Lee Senior Center. Next slide, please. Bingo in Milpitas is regulated by state law, Milpitas Municipal Code. We currently have two licensed bingo games in Milpitas, that is Milpitas Charity Bingo and St. John the Baptist Church. Again, as I mentioned earlier, this was referred as a council priority in late 2023 by Councilmember Chua. Next slide, please. The application was recently submitted by, by senior center staff. They have exempt status per the IRS, and they were previously granted approval by the city council, but that license lapsed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Their proposed hours of operation are Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with a frequency to start quarterly with Saturday bingo marathons. Next slide. Your recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and consider approving the bingo license for the Barbara Lee Senior Center to hold a regular bingo game. If you'd like, we have our Director of Recreation and Community Services here, if you have any questions for them.
Are there any questions from city council? We have one from Councilmember Chua.
It's not a question, but a comment. This, this was brought to my attention by the seniors of the Barbara Lee's Center, and they missed their bingo. So, so I like that we try it out for quarterly, once every three months. And they even, I don't know how the logistics is gonna work, they even volunteered to amend the, the session. So, so this will be an additional thing for them to do, and they welcome it. So thank you for putting this through, thank you to the city clerk, and also to Renee, Director Renee. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, are there any more comments? We have a, Councilmember Lam.
I have a couple of questions, one is, once the license been approved, how many years is the license good for?
Licenses for bingo are an annual renewal.
Okay, second question I saw in the presentation, the schedule is nine to five, that's eight hours? Is that right, or is it four hours?
We won't be doing eight-hour bingo marathons, I don't know that anyone would be ready to sit through that, but good catch. So what the nine to five allows us to do is offer bingo anytime within those operating hours. We would start quarterly, as mentioned on the slide, and probably do a three-hour session, and pair that with the open hours of the senior right now, senior center, which is open right now, to be efficient with staff costs, and then managing the volunteers that are gonna work the bingo sessions. They're looking about like a 10 to 1, it's probably what we're, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. is what we're thinking right now.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
And then we have Councilmember Chua.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to turn off my green thing.
All right, is there anyone else that has any comments? Seeing none, I have a couple of comments, so you mentioned about, I'm piggybacking after Councilmember Lam's question about the annual renewal. What does, what does, what does that entail, an annual renewal?
I'll let City Clerk Suzanne Guzzetta answer that with the renewal, Suzanne. The annual renewal, they will submit an annual report to the city clerk's office. Once that is accepted, we will issue a bingo license renewal.
Okay, and then what's the difference between charity bingo, the St. John's bingo, and this bingo, the city bingo?
Each conducts their bingo games at different locations, varying locations, so Milpitas Charity Bingo is authorized to have bingo games at their specific location. St. John is only authorized at the St. John the Baptist Church. The Barbara Lee Senior Center would only be authorized at the senior center itself, so it allows the public the chance to, to participate in bingo games at their preferred locations.
Thank you for that, so the, is, will there be cash, an exchange of cash?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to make a comment that when St. John the Baptist, when we created, because I was part of the board at the time, we created the bingo for St. John the Baptist Church. And there were some certain rules that the chief of police needs to go there annually and do an inspection, and then he has to report to so can, so Chief, can you come and speak on that? Because there is, there are some regulations, and I just want to make sure that that's being done at the inspection, or some kind of, some kind of, I think you as being the chief, you're supposed to regulate it or some that's because I remember the bylaws, but that was part of the, part of the mandate in the state.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council members, Jared Hernandez serving as your police chief. That is correct, there is an ordinance that requires a couple of things on the bingo provider. For example, annually, they have to report any changes in management personnel to us, they have to report any changes in their procedures or their financial status. The most recent one did happen with Milpitas Charity Bingo, they had a change in their security manager, so they reported that to us. So it's either us asking them annually, or them just providing us as they make those changes, that's how it's been working. They're also required to provide annual reporting to the city with their gross receipts, operational costs, and the amounts given to charity.
Okay, great, just want to make sure that there's, it is being regulated, because, you know, there's cash that's being used. But I am glad that overall it, that we are providing the bingo to the seniors, because they love that, I mean, it's, it's a pastime, it keeps them happy, so I do like that. And we have a, thank you, thank you for your comments, and we have a Councilmember Lam that has a question.
Thank you, Chief, for making those comments. I have, well, you just said, one of the requirements is for security guard to be there. Is that security guard gonna be Milpitas Police or or a staff from the Milpitas City?
No, it would be staff that's hired by whatever entities hosting that bingo game. So the police officers are not doing site security, if that's the question?
Yes.
Nor do we do pay jobs where it's a police officer but being paid for by the entity? We don't, we don't do police officer pay jobs in the city of Milpitas either. So if there's security on site, it would be whatever security company they're contracting with for that requirement.
Okay. Then I have a question for Renee, that, so do we hire a security guard for this senior bingo game?
No, our operations are not on the level of a charity bingo or even St. John's bingo, so they come in the front. Our buy-in is much smaller than the others, so there's not that much cash being handled between the bingo hopefuls and our staff. So they'll check in at the desk, money will be put directly into the safe, we don't, we don't need a security manager. If at such time we become overrun with people that are playing bingo, we would we may have extra staff there, but not hiring any security.
Would that violate any ordinance?
Nope, I don't think so.
Councilmember Leanne, Lam, if I may, the ordinance does not specifically require security. It does however delegate to the chief of police the authority to make recommendations of security if the, if the development of the game requires a later date. So if this game did progress to a point where, in which security was advisable, the chief of police under his authority could recommend security to be provided.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one more question for the annual renewal of the license. Do, does council members, every year, do we need our approval for the renewal, or?
The approval is only the first time it comes through, when it's being reissued. So the reason we're bringing this back to you today is because the bingo license lapsed for multiple years. Otherwise, it would have just been an annual renewal process that the city council would not have seen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam, and we have now Councilmember Leanne.
Thank you, Mayor, so Renee, now that there's cash involved, does the the cash, do we retain any of those, or all the income or the revenue on the bingo will be donated as charity?
The money that's collected, the majority of it goes back to the bingo winners for their pots. Anything that's in excess of the bingo awarded pots would go into the city's general fund as revenue.
So example of one year, how much would it be?
You know, money that we would take in, it's been about five years since we've done bingo, so we'll dust cobwebs off, but we're looking at probably about $500 to $750 of revenue. We're doing it once a quarter, as opposed to once a week or several times a week, like some of the other bingo halls, so.
So 500 to 700 quarterly?
Correct, for the year, for a fiscal year.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Leanne. And so now I move to, for the public hearing on this item? Oh, do you have, we have Councilmember, we have Vice Mayor on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems that bingo is growing, so we have three now.
And, uh, for sure, since this is a very, uh, family-oriented pastime, you know, we will be probably seeing more to come. And I think it's, uh, appropriate to, uh, to check the bingo ordinance again. But in relation to this, I have a question with regards to the chief's duty. I'm looking at the ordinance. I mean, the, the, do we, uh, receive records from, uh, the bingo licensee every year or do we have to request it?
The only one I'm a hundred percent familiar with is the Milpitas Charity Bingo and those have been submitted annually by the bingo, um, facilitator.
Who, who, uh, who keeps the record?
It gets sent, the police department gets a copy and a, a copy goes to the city. I don't know on the city side, but in the police department, our special investigations unit, which deals with all vice crimes, which includes gambling, narcotics, prostitution, auto theft, they're the ones that receive the reports in PD.
Okay. Is there?
Vice Mayor, the annual report is filed with the city clerk's office.
City clerk's office?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Is there an oversight, uh, with committee or part of the city that, that monitors, you know, these bingo licenses other than through the chief of police? We receive the reports and then we archive it, uh, with the city clerk?
Outside of the police department, I'm not sure.
Oh. Okay. Do you remember, Chief, how many years, uh, we had the bingo? I know fourteen, I think, when we approved it first.
Milpitas Charity Bingo, I was probably a lieutenant, so seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, somewhere in there, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yeah, for policy consideration, I would like later on to see, uh, the records submitted by St. John and, and, uh, Milpitas Charity Bingo. Maybe there's something, as I said, in preparation for probably later on, uh, licensee's. If there's a need to, to look at, uh, amend, revise or do something with regards to, uh, the ordinance. Maybe I'll do that in the announcement later.
Uh, so if there is something that you want to propose a prioritization, you could do that during announcements. Also, in answer to your question about oversight, the way that the ordinance is currently structured is that that annual renewal is subject to approval by the city manager's office. And one of the elements for it is that there's no reason to believe that the applicant is not, uh, currently in compliance with all of the standards set forth in the, um, the ordinance.
Okay, the applicant or the licensee?
Sorry, that's correct. I was saying applicant because this is an application, but the licensee.
Licensee, okay, yeah. At some point, maybe, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll see and then maybe we can do something, you know, to improve bingo in Milpitas. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor. Actually, that's a good point because is there a transparency, Chief, on how much each bingo, provider makes? Is it, is that, uh, for, for, in terms of transparency to the state? I know they have to, they have to report to the state, but yeah, is there some kind of a, I, I, I do like that. I didn't realize that yet. Because I know that charity bingo makes a lot of money. I mean, I mean, you know, people that, that volunteer, there's a lot of cash. So do they, are they transparent to, to, uh, the city, to you?
Yeah, they submit the records to us. We're not required as a city to make them public, nor are we required to give them to the state. There may be requirements, uh, on the licensee or the bingo provider to do that.
And that goes to the clerk?
That, that also goes to the clerk and I can't speak to what the city side does with it.
Mayor, if I may? Um, for the, for the money that comes in, there are various, there are limitations at state law as well as in the ordinance to how that money must be used. There are very specific costs that they're allowed to pay for with proceeds from the game and everything else must be used for charitable purpose.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, uh, uh, public discussion. Thank you, Chief.
We have Voltaire Mont Mayor for the public hearing. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm very familiar of this game, the places and possible place. And it's fun. If you're lucky that day, then it's a more, you'll be more happy because you've been excited. Let's say a week of schedule in your calendar, you're excited to go and play. So, um, at least, um, on the MCB, Milpitas Charity Bingo, at least there are twelve nonprofit organizations that are benefited. So, um, I don't wanna mention organizations, but some organizations will make close to a thousand dollars a month or the, from MCB because that's a big, bigger place or, um, more people there lately. And then, uh, the St. John, I was there last night too. Everybody enjoys, even, I don't wanna mention name and who, who goes there and plays. Even at Milpitas Charity Bingo, familiar places, go there. And I believe if you go on the next one too, oh, by the way, it's, it's different participants. St. John's is mainly a church, the church will be benefited, of course. And I mentioned the nonprofit organizations at MCB. And here now, I think, uh, I'm senior, so most of the people playing, will be playing there, will be a senior citizen. So I, yeah, I go there and there's enjoyment at lunchtime, so that's. And I believe there are not, there's no problem with time, place and participants. I have more to say, uh, it's fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mont Mayor. And, uh, so now, I don't see any more speakers on this item, so now we will, uh, have a motion and a second. So we have Councilmember Chua.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? We have,
Second.
We have Councilmember Leon who has seconded. And now we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leon?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Okay, now moving on to leadership and support services. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve is a presentation regarding property tax and sales and use tax within the city of Milpitas. We have our finance director, Louisa Cefresi Howe here to introduce the presenters. They're here from, um, one of the city's consultants, HDL. And this, uh, presentation is part of the ongoing work that the, uh, staff and the council are doing on this year's budget. And we thought that it would be helpful to the council to have a few more details about, uh, and, and an outlook on where we're, how, how we, uh, collect our property tax and our sales tax and the forecast looking forward. So, um, with that, I'll turn the time over to Louise for some additional introductions.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Montano, Vice Mayor Barbadeo, councilmembers Chua, Leon and Lam, Louise Cefresi Howe, finance director for the city of Milpitas. Um, I'm gonna be very brief in my, uh, introductions. This represent, effectively, property tax and sales tax represents sixty-three percent of the revenues coming to the city in any given fiscal year. So given where we are, uh, as far as our projections are concerned, I thought, we thought that it was a good idea to bring our, our external consultants, which is HDL Companies, they've been in the business for quite a long time, and have two separate presentations. The first one is going to be done by Paula Kohn, who is the president of HDL Corin and Kohn. And Paula, please correct me if I mispronounce that. And she'll be doing a thorough presentation on property tax. Subsequently, Tracy, uh, excuse me, Tracy Vesely, V E S E Y, will be presenting on transactions and use, sales and use tax. This is a really good opportunity to ask a lot of questions. Their presentations are gonna take about twenty, twenty-five minutes. So we're gonna try to get through the presentations and then you have plenty of time to ask questions. We'd like to limit it to forty-five minutes, both to respect their time and yours as well. But we do invite questions. You will find that they're very, very knowledgeable about their particular areas. So with that, I will turn over the mic, the virtual mic to Paula Kohn.
Thank you, Louise. I would like to thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, staff and the participants in this meeting this evening for allowing me to come and talk about property taxes, particularly what we're seeing in the current fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, and forecasting for twenty-five, twenty-six. But before I jump into, into the real meat here, and I've been told that it's like drinking from a fire hose sometimes, uh, trying to learn about property tax, I wanna start at the beginning and give you a little bit of basics about the timeline of property values getting on the roll as well as historical data that we're, uh, looking at on a, on a twenty-five-year basis. Next slide, please. To begin with, uh, I'm looking at the current fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. And normally this is animated. I'm going to start on the upper left and move from left to right, left to right, as I go down the page. January first is the lean date for all property values in the state of California. And for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, the assessor uses the events that happened in calendar year twenty-twenty-three. So the sales that happened in twenty-twenty-three, the properties that were, uh, receiving the two percent CPI, properties that burned down, any change that happened in twenty-three is what we're, we're seeing and receiving revenue for in twenty-four, twenty-five. The assessor has the role for about thirty, I forget, uh, six months between January and June. At the end of June, that role is completed, wrapped up and sent to the auditor's office. That's the green box on the left. The auditor has two months to prepare the role, to extend the role, to put direct assessments on it, to, uh, apply any kind of debt service for bond issuances. And at the end of August, that role is sent to the treasurer, tax collector, in the blue box on the right. The treasurer, tax collector, prints and mails the tax bills. Those, of course, are sent to the taxpayers at the bottom in the star. And the taxpayers pay their taxes due in November twenty-twenty-four, delinquent on December tenth, twenty-twenty-four. And the second payment is due starting in February twenty-twenty-five and that payment will become delinquent if it's not paid by April tenth, next week. Taxes are sent to the tax collector. The tax collector tells the auditor, hey, I got the money. And then the auditor will allocate the revenue between November twenty-twenty-four and July or August twenty-twenty-five. So by the time we get to the last payments being made to the city in, uh, July of twenty-twenty-five, we are nineteen months down the road from the data that was used to develop this role. So it's important that you see, if you are looking around the town now and you're seeing something starting to be built, if that is not completed by the end of December, it's not going to be on the twenty-six, twenty-seven role. It will, will probably be completed and you'll see it in twenty-seven, eight. So there is a lagging indicator about the, the values on the roles. Next slide, please. In California, any, any, uh, kind of property that does not have an exemption or is not exempt, like a government property, schools, uh, are taxed. And there are three roles, the secured, the unsecured and the utility role. The secured role includes land and buildings. Whether those buildings are for commercial, residential, industrial, recreational, miscellaneous, institutional uses, they are all taxed at one percent per Prop thirteen. Vacant land is also taxed and mineral rights, water rights, oil rights underneath the earth are also taxed. Those are secured, uh, secured role taxes. They are secured by a lien and if the taxpayer doesn't submit their tax bill by the end of June, on July first, it becomes delinquent. And if it's not, uh, paid in five years, the county will sell that property for the, the tax bill owed. Unsecured properties are not secured by a lien. They are self-reported. They include business properties, soft walls, computers, equipment that is leased from others, any equipment that's used in running a business, a cash register, racks in, uh, clothing stores. All of that is on the unsecured role. Also boats and planes are on the unsecured role. You don't have an airport, but you probably have people in your community who may have a boat parked on their driveway and you're receiving revenue from that boat. If the boat is in the Sausalito Harbor, Sausalito will receive that property tax. And the final role is a utility role. The utility role is assessed by the State Board of Equalization. It includes electricity, gas, railroads, cell towers, uh, telephone equipment, solar panels, uh, water rights, a number of utilities, and they are taxed as a unit. So all of the property that PG&E owns statewide is taxed as a single unit in this, in the state. Next slide, please. Okay, we're gonna start to get into a little bit of the meat here. This is a twenty-five-year history of the values that are, have been assigned to the city of Milpitas. And these are the entire city values, the general fund and the, the redevelopment agency. The historical average in that gray box towards the bottom, uh, shows that average over the last twenty-five has been growth of five point one one percent per year. The largest increase was in twenty-one, oh, uh, twenty-oh-one and twenty-oh-two. And that was when we were seeing the run-up for the tech bubble. And during that particular year, we had not only industrial development, but we had Cisco Corp, KLA, Sun Microsystems, Nanometrics, Lanair Technology, Headway Technology, Quantum Corp and Seagate, all getting ready to open, among others, in the city of Milpitas. They had a pretty good run for one year and then there was a deflation, deflating of that tech bubble. And there were two years of negative change before we stretched our legs again during the run-up to the bank debacle in two thousand and eight, where we saw three years of declining value. Those are the two that are circled in the pinkish-red. After the, uh, Great Recession and the recovery that started in twenty-twelve, thirteen, we've had only positive changes, uh, year over year in the value since that point. I will point out that the role for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two includes the events that happened in calendar year twenty-twenty. That was the year of the pandemic. And you can see that twenty-one, uh, two actually grew four point four percent. And then we had, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four after that. If I look at those four years by themselves and do an average of those four years, the average is five point one three percent. So those four years, while some had four percent and some had higher than that, still on average have, have pretty much met the same standard that we're seeing in all twenty-five years here. Every year is different. You have different product, projects that are being developed, different homes that are being sold. So those variances are part of what we're seeing here, uh, in this growth. Next slide, please. This is a, just a five-year look at the city of Milpitas. The values are broken down as the county assessor does by land improvements, personal property and exemptions. Focusing on the bottom two sets of bars, the gross assessed value includes every piece of property in Milpitas, whether a tax bill is sent or not. So that's where the schools and the city and the county and the state and the federal government, the post office, uh, and, and churches that get exemptions, all of those are in that gross assessed value pot. About four hundred million dollars are not taxed and they fall out before the tax bills are sent on the net taxable value. Currently, the city of Milpitas has twenty-two point two billion dollars in value. Again, that's your general fund and your former RDA. And in one of the past five years, twenty-two, three, you outpaced the county. You had eight percent growth and the county's growth was seven point four. That's on the bottom set of bars. In each of the other three years, you have, uh, underperformed the county as a whole. Next, please. To look at where you, uh, stack up among the other cities in the counties. And every year, this is going to look different and so don't get bummed out. In most cities, uh, I have two gray lines, a high and a low. And the city that isn't the high and low is highlighted in green. But because you're highlighted in green, you're also the city that experienced the lowest year-over-year. that experienced the lowest year-over-year value increase reported for all of the cities in Santa Clara County. That said, the city's dollar change, if you look at that value change column, was the ninth highest in the county out of the 15 cities. And the first set of numbers, the 21, 24, 25 net value, the city has the seventh-largest value overall from all the cities in Santa Clara County. So here's something to think about. Underneath you is Montessorino. Montessorino has $3.2 billion in value. You've got $26.2 billion. It does not take them as much to be, see, a 1% increase as it requires for you to see a 1% increase. You've got a steeper hill to climb. And every time you add almost $1 billion, you added $956 million this year. Every time you add $1 billion to your bottom line, next year, to get that 1% is a tougher thing to do, unless you've got a lot of growth going on. Next slide, please. The city isn't fully within the general fund, and I'm pointing this out. You've got the general fund, and you've got four project areas that were initially part of your redevelopment agency, which is now this assessor agency. That redevelopment agency has a 43.5% share of all the value in the city, a little more than $11.5 billion. And the balance of the city is in the general fund totaling 56.5% and $14.8 billion. I've underlined that under the net value column because in order for you to see a 1% increase in your general fund for fiscal year '25, '26, we need to find at least $148.1 million added, whether that's through property selling, whether that's through new construction, whatever is causing the growth, we have to find $148.1 million in increase for you to see 1% growth. The general fund grew 4.1% this year. So in general terms, your revenue in your general fund is going to grow that same 4%. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to stop here. This is the crux of the matter. This has got an animation, and I'm going to be telling the person that's driving this matter to hit the keys in a minute. But first of all, I want to point out that at the bottom left is the way the city of Milpitas grew, which was a 3.78%. Of that, the general fund grew 4.07%, and the assessor agency grew 3.42%. So those combined are where you're getting your 3.78%. The countywide growth, every city and the county and incorporated area in Santa Clara County grew 5.42%. What this means in the upper right-hand corner is that the city of Milpitas' general fund is going to see an estimated revenue projection of $22,475,667. And that is the revenue on the value for the current year. That does not include supplementals. That does not include any pass-throughs from your former redevelopment agency or any residual revenue. That is just looking at the revenue from the value that was enrolled in the current fiscal year. We had an ERAF shift that reversed the bailout that happened after Prop 13. The county has already subtracted a little more than $9 million for your total to go to education. You get a lot of that back through XSERAF. And the vehicle license in Lou that used to be a population-based revenue stream was changed in the 2004, '05 fiscal year, when the economic recovery bonds were issued. And now it grows by your value change every year. That's going to be $10,377,042. Would you hit Enter three times, please? Thank you. So first of all, to talk about the major causes for growth in any city in any year. And those are the change from the CPI that was granted per Prop 13. This year, it was 2%. The maximum it can be is 2% or the CPI, whichever is less. That growth was responsible for 42.8% of your total increase or 1.62% of your 3.78%. So that's a big amount of your total growth. On top of that, when properties sold last year in the green box, they added $460.9 million. That was a 48.2% change. And those two added together are already 91% of your growth, was the responsibility of those two elements. You had new construction in both the non-residential and residential. And those added a little less than, two-thirds of our percentage point. Can you hit Enter three times? Okay. Unsecured, again, we've looked at the unsecured. You know that that's self-reported. The largest decline in this role had to do with Headway Technologies. They have a new location, and they moved their unsecured from the unsecured role to the secured role. It's still there. It's just not being accounted for in the same pot. And so they actually had an increase overall. And the Newport Corporation, another industrial site, added $45.6 million. Enter three times. The blue box is the cross-reference. Cross-reference here are what's called possessory interest. These are government-owned properties that are being used by private entities. In this case, Sango Court, it is an affordable living apartment site, is on a piece of property that is owned by the Santa Clara County. The property was underdeveloped last year, underdevelopment, and it was not occupied. And because it was not occupied yet, it was taxed last year. But now that we have people that are using this apartment site as affordable housing site, they are receiving an exemption, and there's been a reduction of $67 million because of that exemption. Hit the Enter twice. And the other changes, here's where we see Headway Technologies was added in part of this. And a lot of times, the assessor does not get all of these sales on the roll in the right year. They kind of lag in. And so some of this is sort of a catch-up from the prior year. Okay, next, please. City of Milpitas receives roughly $16.62 cents of every tax dollar collected, not only in this particular tax rate area, but this is pretty standard for the city as a whole. The rest of the individual taxing entities that receive revenue are broken down. Just so that anybody listening understands, the city of Milpitas does not receive every tax dollar paid by anybody in the city of Milpitas. You get a whopping 16 cents of that tax dollar. The school gets 40%. ERAF gets another 15 cents. Santa Clara County gets 14 cents less than you. Hit the Enter bar once, please. Just want to remind you that after Prop 13 was adopted, the legislature had to figure out a way to manage what used to be a mill rate into the new property tax scheme. And what was decided was that you would look at the revenue that was received by each taxing entity in each tax rate area, and this is a tax rate area, in the three years prior to Prop 13. And if a school district got 40% of the revenue that was collected, they would get a 40-cent share of the tax dollar, which is what we're seeing in Milpitas Unified here. And because everybody was screaming how poor they were, the state had a surplus that year. They bailed out just about everybody but schools. And then, when the state couldn't balance its budget between 1992 and 1994, they reversed that bailout and had money that you were getting go to educational services. And that's called the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, or ERAF for short. That your share is not subject to negotiation. It's set. We find it extremely rare for a city or anybody else to increase this amount unless they take on a new responsibility. You want to be a fire, you know, you don't have a fire district, and let's say it's a county fire district. And now you want to do what the county fire is doing, you might get the county fire share if you can negotiate that. Or if the county's doing library services, and you think you could do a better job, and you want to detach from the county library, that's a possibility. They might pick up 3 cents or more. But that's about the only way you're going to get more revenue without going back to the voters for their approval, whether it is a direct assessment or a bond measure. Next slide. And you shouldn't complain because this is ordered by the general fund share of the revenue received. And Milpitas gets more than any other city in Santa Clara County. The next closest to you is Mountain View, and they're about 4 tenths of a cent less than you. Montessorino, Cupertino, Saratoga, and Los Altos are all either no property tax or low property tax city before Prop 13, and they are limited to 7 cents less ERAF. Next slide, please. Looking at your revenue, I just want to explain that revenue is not now, nor has it ever been allocated at the parcel level. The county looks at the value that you have in each tax rate area times 1%, times your share, 16.26 cents. And they come up with the total revenue that we've talked about, which was that $22,475,677, and that bold estimated 1% revenue allocation. And so, once they have that amount, that's the amount of revenue that you're going to receive. But you receive revenue as it is collected by the county. The county collects 95% of their revenue as secured and 5% as unsecured. The amounts that were used to calculate your 1% total was 78% for unsecured and 92.2% for secured. So in essence, you're receiving more secured revenue than your value would generate and less unsecured revenue for that total 100%. So that's part of AB8, and this was developed when we did not have calculators or did not have computers, and everything was done on yellow pads. And ratios were the best way to get your revenue back to you. Next slide. 10-year history of revenues. Just briefly, you've gone from 15.1% to 22.7% in your general fund due to value growth in the past nine years. You've picked up $7.3 million in additional revenue during that period of time in general fund and a little more than $4.4 million increase in your VLF. So today, you're receiving about $11.7 million more than you received 10 years ago. And I know that you've got plans, and you've spent that money as it has materialized. You've got additional programs. You've got perhaps different salary levels. But for the most part, you are working on more than $11 million more revenue this year than you had 10 years ago. Next slide. To talk a little bit about what's been happening in the median sale price. The graph on the left looks at the past 15 years on what has happened to the median sale prices. 2011 was the lowest year during the recession, when your median sale prices fell to $420,000. At that point, they started increasing, and you had seven years of positive growth. Four of those years were double-digit. In 2019, there was a cooling of the housing market, a rising of interest rates, and a decrease in sale prices. And so we saw a decline of 3%. And then we started increasing again for the next two or three years. Remember, calendar year 2022 and 2023, low interest rates, pent-up demand because people had stayed at home for three or six months during the pandemic. They were ready to buy again. And so we saw huge increases in the median sale price in those two years. 2023, the year that's driving the data that you're receiving your revenue on right now, we were hampered by the higher interest rates. People were reducing their sale prices to sell their properties, so we saw a decline in the median sale price. And then 2024, we rebounded. Just to point out that this actually has the first two months of 2025. It's highlighted in the gold color. January, February, not good months for sales. That will turn around as we get into the late spring and early summer. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you. And to compare all the cities in Santa Clara County, the parcel sale count for '22 and '23, in every instance, in 2024, the sales numbers, the number of units sold, have either met or exceeded what they were last year. Your median price right now, we just looked at that, is $1,350. You're 5.6% higher than you were last year. This is through the end of 2024. Last year, Cupertino was the only city that did not exceed their prior-year sale price. But please remember, a median price is an indicator of what's coming to market. If Cupertino had a lot more condos and townhomes come to market in 2024 instead of the detached single, they may have had lower price points anyway, and that would be the reason for this. Next slide. I point this out just briefly because it's part of our newsletter. It does show the reason for this increases for the past 10 years. And I want to focus on the green part of each of these bars, and then I'll talk about the blue. The green part is the amount of the growth that's due to sales. And you can see the difference between the '22, '23 year, again, the sales that happened in calendar 2021, and what we've seen in the last two years. So that's one of the reasons that the growth was down. The other was the blue, and that's the additive due to properties that have had new construction. And those that were reporting new construction in 2023 were lower than we had seen in either the prior two years. There has been a year, 2021, again, the year of 2021, too. The calendar year 2020 was what was impacting that, the year of the pandemic. There was some retrenching in those new construction projects as people learned to mask up. Just to comment that as we're looking today, you will see growth of a little more than 2% in that green bar for next year, where this year was 1.5. So you're going to see about a half a percentage point more next year than you saw this year. Okay, next slide. And speaking of next year. This is our budget forecast. I'm not going to go into all of this, but I want to show you, this is a baseline. This has nothing in the forecast for completed new construction. But starting at the very top, underneath the bold real property tax, real property value, we calculate the 2% CPI that's going to be granted for '25, '26. We know the properties that are sold. We buy First American Title Data on a monthly basis. And those two numbers are not to be changed. They are bound, in fact. Below that, you've got base-year values in your former redevelopment project area that do not change between tax years. And we budget the secured personal property, unsecured personal property, and the unitary values flat. Yes, there may be some change on that, but it can go either way, and we tend to go in conservative. So without new construction, we're showing a 3.73%. This year, you had 3.78% with new construction. Next slide, please, and Enter. Okay. We provide for your staff a list of the new construction on a four-year historical basis. And then we, using that, give you a trimmed average and then give you 25, 50, and 75% of that. I don't like leaving money on the floor. And not budgeting new construction gives you an extremely conservative budget. But I think you need to do something with that because you do have redevelopment. The reason that 2023 is asterisked and highlighted is that it is not included in the trimmed average. It is an outlier. It's three or four times any other year. If you're going to have another year like that, bless your hearts. But if you don't have some verification that the assessor has enrolled all the values on those, don't put it in the budget. Make an adjustment mid-year. This increase included Headway Technologies, LD Milpitas on Alder, S&amp;B Milpitas on Milpitas, and DREF at 174 Gates. Those were the reasons for that big increase. Next slide. So I am taking the $43 million, which was a 50% of that average construction, and plugging it in, and it's showing that your general fund growth next year is going to be 4%, pretty much in line with what you saw this year. From that, we've got the second year of this forecast. We're expecting better sales transactions numbers, and we've boosted that up. And then beyond that, we're using a 16-year average of sales transactions. Last slide. Just to give you a little bit of insight on who the top 10 are in the city. Last year's top 10 ranks are on the right, this year are on the left. I will tell you that every parcel that ranked last year is in the same ranking this year. a little bit different positioning. Last year's Sandbox Expansion LLC was number seven. This year, WD Mica zero zero one LP, who purchased that property, is now number ten. Eight of these top ten have got appeals pending. Either there were vacancies during the Great Recession, there's been some problem with the incomer economics in their filing appeals. To look at the pictures on the left, number one is Cisco Systems, number two, KLA Tensor, and number three, Headway Technologies, and number four is Milpitas District One, those are the Graham Apartments. At the top of the page, the Milpitas Mills, that's the great mall of the Bay Area. The number six is Anton Milpitas, that's the Aspire Apartments. The McCarthy Center's Holding is number seven. Number eight are the Eleanor Apartments. Then we've got the WH Silicon Valley Industrial Multiparcel Swath of the City, and finally, the property that was purchased from Sandbox. Okay, that is it, and I'm ready for questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Very informative. I'm sure Councilmember Lamb loved that. I call him the numbers guy. He knows, he knows all about that. Is there any, are there any questions?
I know. Yeah, I know, I know. There's a lot, there's a lot to understand, and I get that it's a lot to take in.
Thank you, and we have Councilmember Lamb that has a question for you.
Yeah, on slide number nine.
Okay.
The property tax dollar breakdown.
Yes.
How did the percentage was determined?
It was determined by the revenue that the city of Milpitas received in the three years prior to the adoption of Prop thirteen. So you actually received probably about twenty cents or twenty-two cents, but then ERAF, that Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund that reversed the bailout, took away about a quarter of your revenue. So you were about at twenty cents before that happened.
The Milpitas U-5, is that?
They were getting forty cents of every tax dollar.
Like, how, how does Pop thirteen determine that?
Well, so before Prop thirteen, in order to tax something, a city would levy a mill rate, you would figure out how much revenue you needed. The assessor would tell you what the assessed value was going to be estimated in Milpitas. You would divide the revenue by the value and you would get a fraction, and that's what you would tax every resident in your city. And because people were being taxed out of their homes, big hanging quotes here, back in nineteen seventy-eight, there was a referendum to get rid of that methodology and to limit the value on property to be taxed at one percent of the value. In order to do that, they had to come up with a different way of scaling what used to be into what was now. And so, in order to do that, they said, how much revenue did the school district receive in the three years prior to Prop thirteen? They get a number. How much did the city of Milpitas receive? They get a number. How much did the county receive? They get a number. And all of those have to be fit as a percentage into that one percent.
So every city is where similar?
Every city, the, the, go one slide, enter, please. The process was the same in every city. Can you advance? But every city has a different percent. Because some cities taxed a lot more than you did before Prop thirteen was adopted, and some taxed a lot less. If a city taxed a lot less, maybe the schools got a bit more, or maybe the county got a bit more, because the dollar is the dollar. How much you get of that dollar depends on how much everybody else gets as well.
Okay. Um, okay.
But we're easy, councilman, I would not have a job.
Okay, I got it now, question. Let's say if there's a downturn on real estate value, the assessed value of each year would be going downward. Let's say, three consecutive year, the real estate market goes down.
Right.
So the public tax for those three years would go down as well. Now, the fourth, the fourth year, when the, when the real estate market goes up, does public tax go up to the market?
No.
Where you are based on the Pop thirteen increase?
Yeah, I wish I had that slide. So what happens is, if the values go down, the assessor is required per Prop eight to reduce the value to put in line with what are then consistent market values. It can never exceed where it would have been had it continued to get the two percent CPI, which is called the Prop thirteen base. So if the, let's say that it started at a five hundred thousand dollars, it went down to four hundred thousand dollars, and then five years from now, it comes, it's worth, the house is now selling for five hundred and ninety thousand, but if it had never been reduced, it would only be taxed at five hundred and thirty. It's put back on that five hundred and thirty thousand dollar line, and that's what it's taxed. So I have, I actually have a graphic for that, and I will send it to you.
Hmm, okay. I see. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments? So thank you so much for the presentation, and this is just, it's not an action item, it's just information only, right?
Right.
Yeah, and so, so I also wanted to ask, so basically, what, overall, what I, when you made this presentation, I saw that it's really, most of our money, even though it comes from property taxes, but you get, what I saw, unless I saw it wrong, but we get more money from industry, or light industrial, from the businesses. Is that true?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Not only, not only the building, but the stuff inside that building usually has a higher ticket value as well.
Yeah, so that tells me that the state, you know, with all their housing arena numbers, and they're making us build out, convert a lot of industrial land to housing, it's, we really, the cities lose out, and again, that goes back to taking away our local control and we're kind of have our hands tied, we're kind of hostages to the state. But yeah, it's really important to preserve those, those lands.
It's another plug for Alex's mantra, preserve employment lands.
So you also mentioned about one percent in the general fund. Is that what we should, is that's what we should be having, seeing every year, a one percent increase to our general fund every year?
You actually receive a four percent increase to your general fund this year. I'm just saying that, you know, every, every time you grow, it's going to, it's a little bit harder struggle to get that four percent, because now you've got to overcome the growth as well. So that's why we look at that overall twenty-five year or thirty-year average of a little more than five percent. I'm not telling you to budget five percent a year, that's not the way to do it either, but historically, you've been growing about five percent a year.
So we should be seeing a four percent average?
Yeah, you, four, three and a quarter to four percent, I think, would be a pretty much gimme in any year. And we had an economic downturn again.
And right now, we're only seeing one percent?
No, no, you're saying four percent.
Oh, okay, okay, that's good. And so that means that we should be doing more revenue generation. That means we should be creating more businesses, so, know our outreach, bringing more businesses to our city. So yeah, I guess that, to me, that's the bottom line. Thank you so much, and we have, Councilmember Lamb has one more question.
I noticed in Milpitas, near the great mall, there are apartment complexes. I believe some of the apartment complexes are for rent only. For those apartment complexes for rent, the, do they pay public tax for each unit or the whole buildings?
The whole building. The whole building, unless they are a low or moderate income property, where they're being subsidized for the rents, and they can then file for an exemption and don't pay any property tax. That's how that Sangio Court property pays no property tax.
Oh.
Yeah, affordable housing is not a moneymaker in terms of property taxes. It's got another purpose entirely, and property taxes isn't that purpose.
Okay.
Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Lewis, for bringing this to consultants with us. That's really a good suggestion out of the finance, finance subcommittee, and we appreciate it so much, especially me. I have a question for, I think, City Manager Ned. I know on the Sangio Court, we don't have, it's tax-free, and estimated loss of tax revenue is sixty-seven million. How many more of these affordable housing do we have, and what is in the pipeline?
There is a second affordable housing project on Sangio Court. I don't believe it received the same, or do they, Lewis, do you know, do they all receive a tax?
If they're affordable housing, there is generally some sort of exemption.
Yeah, so there's, there's one more that's like the one that, similar to the one that opened, it's just across the street, that's almost completed. Other than that, most of the projects are market rate, except for the fifteen percent that they set aside for affordable. And then, Chris, do you know, like, the projects like Pulte, that put all of their, up on California Circle, they put all of their affordable units in a separate building. Will that separate building be tax exempt if it's a hundred percent affordable?
So the tax exemptions are generally applied to specific properties. For instance, if you're talking about the Pulte project, they condoize the townhouse uses, so there's separate parcels subject to separate taxation, the, and those were separate from the area where they're thinking of developing affordable housing and proposing an affordable housing project to the state. So my assumption would be that those two things will be, end up being taxed differently and qualify for different tax exemptions. And again, not every partially affordable project is wholly exempt. They qualify for different levels of tax exemptions. So for instance, the Sangio Court is notable because it's a hundred percent affordable as, as is a South Main Street property that I think was approved relatively recently.
Yeah, so there's one other, there are at least two other projects like that that are in the pipeline where they include a market rate component, and then they have brought all of the affordable together in one building. So the, the other two that I'm thinking of, one is the Sobrato property, they would like to do something similar. And I believe the Toll project that is circulating over in the employment lands, it would change that, also includes a one hundred percent affordable building. So that's, that may be one of the reasons why these developers, you know, they're savvy about how they do their affordable housing, and they're putting them all into a separate property.
A tax break.
So there may be a tax break on that.
Is there, you might not be able to answer this, but can you look into ways to maybe mediate the loss, or is there room for tax negotiation during, I mean, before the construction? I mean, during planning? But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is can we negotiate not to lose the sixty-seven million? I mean, a percentage of which, I don't know. I'm just thinking ahead.
Well, I will say this. Tax revenues and tax exemptions are set by state law outside of the city's control. In terms of what exemptions they qualify for, it would depend on what project gets approved. I don't want to go too far down this, this subject line to get outside of what's been agendized, but for instance, under the Affordable Housing Ordinance, those kinds of alternative proposals that don't strictly comply with our Affordable Housing Ordinance, which requires affordable units normally to be dispersed throughout the entire property and the entire project and all of the units made available, those are not things that you are required by the ordinance to approve as the city council, they are exemptions the applicant can apply for. It'd be subject to your discretion on, and specifically, one of the criteria for that discretion is whether the proposal gives better value to the community than what the Affordable Housing Ordinance by its fifteen percent onsite distributed requirement would otherwise provide.
Now, I understand where they're concentrating affordable housing in one parcel versus the other. I wish, I wish I knew that earlier.
Yeah, definitely something to keep in mind, for the council to keep in mind as these projects come forward.
Yes, please, please remind us.
Yeah.
Thank you both.
Yeah, plus, you know, they get tax credit, the developer gets tax credits, and it's huge.
Thank you, Director Lewis.
Yeah. Is there anyone else that would, we have Councilmember Lynn.
Do ADUs exempt from the tax, too, or?
Paula, this question is for you. Are ADUs, I'm going to give the answer, but are ADUs exempt from property tax?
No, they're not. And they can also, I believe, be sold separately now.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. Would like to make any more comments? If not, then we'll just get note and receipt. Oh, we, oh, we have another one.
You do have another one. We thought we'd start with the easy one first.
Okay.
So Paula, thank you so much. As usual, you know a lot and you're very good at transmitting that knowledge. We appreciate your time today. And now we have Tracy Vesely. Tracy, forgive me for mispronouncing your name, if I have, and she will be doing a similar presentation in a level of detail, also similar, on the city of Milpitas sales tax and transaction taxes. So Tracy, the virtual microphone is yours.
Okay. Hello, good evening. My name is Tracy Vesely. I'm with HGL Companies, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for having me and sitting through these kind of detailed presentations this evening. So I am going to walk through an overview of sales and use tax, transactions and use tax, look at kind of statewide results and forecasting, and then dive into Milpitas, Bradley Burns, and Measure F results and forecasting, and of course, leave some time for questions at the end. There are a few slides in my presentation that I, I think I'm going to skip over and really focus on some of the more relevant ones, and I do have one slide out of order, so I'll be skipping over that one, too. So if we can move on to forward slides, please. You don't need to hear about me, so thank you. What is on the screen right now is a breakdown of the city of Milpitas sales tax rate. I know when the Finance Director submitted the agenda item, she included a breakdown of the sales tax rate as well. This is just a different slice of the same. Bottom line is the rate, total rate in Milpitas is nine point three seven five percent, and that does include your Measure F quarter cent. When we kind of slice and dice this around a little bit, the state rate total is seven point two five percent. That includes Prop one seventy-two, your Bradley Burns one percent that we'll be talking about, and also a countywide transportation fund, point two five percent. All of that combined, and a couple of these other little amounts, total seven point two five percent, and that is the total state rate. Now, the state allows for an additional two percent to take it up to nine point two five percent. That is the cap sales tax rate. You'll note that your rate is higher than that. You're at nine point three seven five, as are some other cities in Santa Clara County, and that is because in the city sales tax rate, there are a lot of And that is because uh in the city sales tax rate, there are a lot of countywide tax measures, one of which is exempt from the cap. So when I pull that out, uh you're actually at the nine point two five percent. Or it complies with the nine point two five percent. But your rate is, is actually nine point three seven five. There are many counties, several counties in the state that have exemptions authorized by the legislature that allow for exceeding that nine point two five. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, or I will. All right, next slide, please. All right, so what is taxed in California for sales tax? All tangible personal property. The tax is only levied once and used, you know, by the ultimate customer. Retailers that buy wholesale do not pay sales tax. That again gets paid by the user, the final user. And those wholesalers, of course, files resale permits in order to be wholesalers. Next slide, please. What is not taxed? Oh, my goodness, so much in the state of California is not taxed. Property, uh land and buildings, that's property tax. Paula just covered that and no way can I ever match her presentation and her level of detail. But property is not subject to sales tax. Utilities are not. That would be, um you know, utility users tax, so that's a separate tax. Merchandise sold to the federal government, prescription medicine, transmitted goods electronically, which is interesting to me in today's age. And lots more. So there is a whole publication by the CDTFA, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. That is who administers sales tax in California. A whole publication that I cited that lists all of the property or sales tax exemptions. It's twenty-six pages long, really teeny print. And every legislative session, more exemptions are introduced. I just quickly looking at the current legislative update, AB forty-two is another exemption being introduced to exempt the sale, sales tax for baby wipes and car seats. So just another, another element of goods sold in California is subject to possible exemption. In California, it feels like we have a high sales tax rate. In some areas we do, but we have a really narrow base. We are very limited in what we can tax. So it's just certain goods and mostly not services. So a little bit challenging with regard to sales tax in California from that perspective. Next slide, please. All right, let's talk about the local one percent Bradley Burns uh sales and use tax allocation. And it comes to you two ways. So you get it directly and you get it indirectly. Directly is sales tax. These are really, um you know, these are resident businesses in the city of Milpitas. Auto dealers, uh retail stores, restaurants, drugstores, grocers. These are all resident businesses, places of sale. Sales tax generated by sales in those locations come directly to the city. Indirect, uh now we're getting into the pools. So indirect is really use tax and largely comprised of internet sales and also includes third-party auto sales that go through the DMV and um other online related transactions. Goes into the countywide use tax pools based on the place of use. So internet purchases made by Milpitas residents, it's going to, that sales tax will come into the Santa Clara countywide pool. It uh will then be distributed to all the jurisdictions within the county based on their pro-rata share of the Bradley Burns place of sale revenues for that quarter. It gets recalculated each quarter. And I will actually talk about that a little bit more in a moment as well. Indirect or pool revenues, which are part of your total one percent sales tax, have increased dramatically since twenty nineteen due to growth in online sales from both legislation and just use. And we are using the internet for shopping a lot more since the pandemic than we ever have in the past. And that has kind of shifted some of that revenue stream. All right, next slide to forward, please. I'm going to skip this one right now. So what is use tax? Use tax is charged on all goods sold um to California customers from out-of-state retailers. I kind of talked about this already. It is also sales tax that is collected, but for whatever reason, a local place of sale could not be determined, so it goes into the pool. Um so first, it goes into the countywide pool where the goods are delivered. Second is distributed from the pool to all the county agencies based on their pro-rata share. So a little bit of a duplicative slide. Next, please. Okay, shifting gears, let's talk about transaction and use tax abbreviated as TUT. It's also known as a district tax, all the same thing. You have measure F, which was recently extended through measure J. But next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, so what is, oh, sorry, thank you. What is the major difference between sales tax and transactions and use tax? There are a lot of differences, a lot of nuances. Sales tax collection relies on place of sale. So you're getting Bradley Burns sales tax for local businesses in the city. Those places of sale are generating direct Bradley Burns sales tax. You do have measure F, so those local places are also generating transactions and use tax. Uh where there's a difference, however, is when there are deliveries into the city where there's not a place of sale. Those deliveries are being assessed, the transactions and use tax, but not the Bradley Burns. When you have deliveries going out of the city where the transaction happens in the city, but it's being delivered outside of the city for use, those transactions are being assessed, the Bradley Burns, but not the district tax or not the transactions and use tax. Because it's going outside of the city, so it's not subject to the transactions and use tax. So when we're looking at forecasting between the Bradley Burns and measure F, there's some differences there uh as a result of Bradley Burns being place of sale and transactions and use tax measure F being destination-based. All right, next slide, please. TUT online sales are a little easier to explain. It's pretty obvious. Transaction use tax follows the goods to the customer where the goods are delivered, no matter where they came from. And um you probably all remember South Dakota versus Wayfair. We've talked about this for a number of years now. That took effect in October of twenty nineteen. This was a Supreme Court decision that allowed states to collect sales tax from out-of-state online retailers. And Assembly Bill one forty-seven in California was the legislation that allowed California to collect out-of-state online retailers, um including those third-party sellers on those marketplace facilitator platforms. So this really popped up uh sales tax revenue in California at a time when we probably needed it the most, right at the pandemic. So as brick and mortar closed down and kind of cratered, online sales shot up. We'll look at a slide that demonstrates that in just a moment. Okay, and there we go. So let's look at the statewide sales tax results for fourth quarter. Fourth quarter is the most recent quarter that we have data on. Kind of like what Paula explained with regard to property tax, we have a lag. She has a nineteen, eighteen, nineteen month lag. We, we have a two month lag, but it's still a lag nonetheless. So the sales tax data that we're analyzing right now and adjusting our forecast as a result of is fourth quarter of twenty-four. So that's October through December, those busy shopping months. We won't get first quarter data until the beginning of June. So it's about two months, you know, first quarter ends at the end of March. Businesses have until the end of April to submit. CDTFA has a month to do their thing with the data and we get it on June first. So always two months behind. We're seeing a trend in uh twenty-four, twenty-five of decline. And fourth quarter twenty-four was not different. When we look at the bottom, you can see one point two percent is what, negative one point two percent is what we landed on in fourth quarter twenty-four compared to fourth quarter of twenty-three, same period one year ago. Autos and transportation, building and construction, both in a red box declines compared to the prior fuel and service stations driven directly by the price of crude oil. It was down during the fourth quarter. And as a result, so were sales tax dollars statewide. General consumer goods, these are brick and mortar stores statewide. Consumers are a little cautious for a lot of good reasons right now. Not spending at the same level, particularly on electronics and furniture and sporting goods, jewelry, a lot of those kind of nice-to-haves, not need-to-haves. Restaurants is a bright spot. It is continuing to be positive, a little less positive, but folks are still eating out. Believe it or not, even with the higher menu prices. And pools, this is the countywide use tax pool that I just spoke to is positive. And the reason why this is four percent up is because it's reflecting the growth in online sales. On a statewide basis, um as a side note, business and industry, the, the third category down is up almost one percent. That includes online retail as well. Those online retail sales that are those big fulfillment centers located in certain agencies, that gets categorized in that business and industrial uh tax group. So these are the top seven tax groups or major industry groups. This is how we categorize sales tax. It kind of dovetails with how the state also categorizes sales tax. We had projected fourth quarter to be one point six percent down. So being down one point two percent was a little bit better, but again, still seeing a trend down. And you can see on the right-hand side, um kind of a regional summary, Bay Area down. Most, most of the regions are seeing declines in their sales tax for the fourth quarter. Next slide, please. All right, I won't spend too much time on this slide. It's a little difficult to read. But on the calendar year results for statewide sales tax trends, I'll say the thirteen-year average, we're seeing growth of five point eight percent. So even though you see this dip in twenty twenty related to the pandemic, we rocketed back again. We kind of peaked around twenty twenty-two and started to reset and come back down. So twenty twenty-four um is lower than twenty twenty-three on a statewide basis. But on a statewide basis is still much higher than pre-pandemic. So we have more than rebounded. We've exceeded what we, that growth trajectory that we would otherwise have been on without the pandemic. All right, next slide, please. All right, this is the slide I mentioned a moment ago regarding online sales versus brick and mortar in-store sales and kind of that comparison. I get a question about this frequently. So this goes back to twenty twenty, or yeah, twenty seventeen, all the way up to twenty twenty-four. Because now we have that calendar year data. You can see in twenty twenty, um the green line, which is brick and mortar, totally caving in as stores shut down. And then you see the blue line, which is online sales, this is all retail by the way, just rocketing up. And that is AB one forty-seven. It's also pandemic frenzy spending. We really spent a lot during the pandemic. Kind of continued into twenty twenty-one, while at the same time, brick and mortar started to rebound. So um what I will say about the rebound is a lot of that rebound is happening in discount department stores, like on a statewide basis, Costco, Target, Walmart. Also in more value-oriented um stores like TJ Maxx, Home Goods. People are really looking for value when they're shopping. And that is where we're seeing a lot of the increase in the recent brick and mortar sales tax growth. Online sales just continues. Um so we're seeing a bit of a dip down in brick and mortar and a little bit of a incline up related to online. Next slide, please. This is another uh kind of explanation of how our retail sales allocated. Three ways. One way is brick and mortar, direct allocation. Second way is online out-of-state. That goes into the pools. And then online in-state, those are direct allocations to agencies that do have those fulfillment centers. So a lot of businesses in the state um with logistic delivery services have built fulfillment centers all up and down the state for same-day, next-day, second-day delivery. And those actual fulfillment centers are considered stores by uh current state law. And those um payments are allocated directly to them. And there's been quite an increase of that in the last couple of years. Okay, next slide, please. So looking at the statewide forecast considerations, um I don't think any of these are a surprise to any of you. Interest rates continue to struggle. Uh the Fed just decided not to increase again recently. It's been a hindrance, I'm sorry, decrease, did I say increase? Decrease. It's been a hindrance both in the auto industry, construction, industrial, credit and equity are difficult to acquire and expensive. Tariff is the word of the hour right now. Uh maybe we'll learn more tomorrow. But tariffs and inflation um are also a challenge and a big consideration as we look at sales tax dollars. And I will say that it's a complex consideration because depending on people's spending habits, tariffs and inflation can actually increase sales tax dollars. Consumer spending is a question mark. We're seeing a lot of brick and mortar sales contracting. Online sales really in the value sector increasing a little bit, but those two have a pretty direct relationship. As a forecast in green, gas prices, uh we anticipate them to go up and increase. And that will be an increase in service station revenues. It's a bummer for us at the pump, but it's great for sales tax. And then again, travel and dining, we continue to uh pay for, pay for experiences and dining out a little less on buying stuff, more on experiences. Next slide, please. So really quick, I mean, how will tariffs affect sales tax? Oh, boy, we've been scratching our heads and trying to figure this out. We don't have a strong metric at the moment because the proposed tariffs are all over the place. Um what will actually be enacted and for how long? Tomorrow is Paddle Liberation Day with additional tariffs uh being announced. Twenty percent, I believe, on most imports. What will future congressional bills entail? Will there be challenges? Will these tariffs change? And really, the bottom line for California is how California consumers respond. You know, discretionary spending, we're starting to see a decline. Eman spending, I think we might see a bubble this quarter and into next quarter of spending as folks are trying to beat the tariffs. I've read a lot of articles about automobile spending. Folks are going out and getting those cars that they put off for a while, even with higher interest rates in order to beat the tariff. So this one is a tough one with regard to sales tax because it's not always the way you think it's going to land. Next slide, please. This is just a quick slide of the tariffs that we knew about as of March twenty-sixth. So we're at April one and things have changed already. Things will change again tomorrow. I mean tariffs are definitely real and I think that there is certainly an impact. I think that there is certainly an impact and our sales tax forecasting is trying to consider those impacts in the key sectors and making adjustments accordingly. Um but again, it's a really tough one to grab on to right now and be precise. Next slide, please. Another area of consideration is inflation and sales tax. Um an interesting relationship. You know, there's still, folks are still spending money. We're still seeing, while we're seeing some declines in, you know, the last few quarters, year over year in sales tax, it's still up compared to pre pandemic. Um folks are still spending money and there's, there's some pressure there. There's still demand, higher prices and demand equal higher sales tax. So there's, it's kind of an interesting dynamic right now. Um and the data that we're seeing so far indicates that while there's a little bit of, you know, folks are receding a little bit in their spending, they're still spending. And we're still seeing a relative growth in sales tax. Next slide. I mentioned interest rates earlier. Uh the target Fed rate is four point two five, four point five. Uh we're not quite there yet. So uh interest rates are part of that, part of that consideration. Next slide. So looking at the full statewide forecast on a quarterly basis, you can see going back to first quarter of twenty three, that big red box. First quarter twenty three to fourth quarter twenty four, uh quarter, you know, year over year negative growth. Definitely stepping down. But what you don't see on the screen right yet is we're stepping down off of some really big growth periods.
Yeah.
And we're not coming all the way down. We're just coming a little bit down. But twenty three, twenty four, down one point one percent fiscal year statewide. Twenty four, twenty five statewide anticipating one percent down. And really moderate growth in twenty five, twenty six on a statewide basis. Next slide, please. All right, kind of similar to the last slide, but this is on a fiscal year basis. And I mentioned while we're seeing decreases in twenty three, twenty four and twenty four, twenty five of about one percent. Look at twenty twenty one and twenty one, twenty two. I mean, that growth was was incredibly significant. And that is coming off of nineteen twenty, which was pandemic. So really, um sales tax has shot up. A big part of that is online retail sales that we now receive that we did not receive previously. So anticipating this year to be uh down, low, moderate growth in twenty five, twenty six. And then anticipating kind of a settling and uh more normal sales tax growth going forward. All right, next slide. So let's take a really quick look at the fourth quarter results for Milpitas because these are crazy. And I debated as to whether to throw this up in the slides just because they're crazy. But I did want to just share how um sales tax moves around. So bottom line results for fourth quarter is up twelve point three percent for your Bradley Burns sales tax. That is significant. Talk about bucking the statewide trend. However, if you look at the very first category, business and industry, it's your largest sales tax category. It is crazy, forty percent, forty point three percent. Why? It is because you have a bunch of, you have about five hundred and twenty six thousand dollars of one time taxpayer payments in the fourth quarter that will not repeat going forward. And that really skews that result. If I pull that out, it skewed the the countywide pool result as well, by the way, because it it increased your pool share for the quarter. So you benefited. I will say that in fourth quarter of twenty five, you're going to see a decrease in your pool share as a result of this. But if I pulled out the one time dollars, what you would really see is about five percent growth in sales tax for the quarter. Still positive, still bucking the statewide decline, but definitely not twelve point three percent. So when we're looking at your sales tax, we're looking at every single business accounting for audit adjustments, late payments. Um one time use tax allocations and making those adjustments in the forecast. So that five hundred and twenty six thousand dollars is not included going forward. I peeled it out. Next slide, please. Actually, let's go one more slide. I'm being mindful of the time here, so I'm gonna try to speed it up just a little bit. So this is just kind of a fiscal year and calendar year gross look at uh Milpita's sales tax one percent. And you can see on the top line or the top graph on a fiscal year basis from eleven, twelve auto all the way to twenty three, twenty four. Um your thirteen year trend, you've grown fifty five point five percent. A lot of that is online sales, but it's also your industrial sector. And I know you had a conversation about that with regard to property tax. So that growth sector really boosted some of your sales tax as well, in addition to your property tax. You can see the pandemic um dip in twenty twenty one. And then everything came roaring back, twenty two, twenty three was a high year. Came back down in twenty three, twenty four. Um and again, likely in twenty four, twenty five. But you're still above pre pandemic levels or pretty close to it. Um if if, so that that's also a question I recently often, down below on a calendar year basis. Slightly, slightly different look, um because it's capturing months in a different way. But very similar, big growth trajectory and twenty twenty four higher than twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. That would be pre pandemic. Next slide, please. Quickly looking at um Measure F, fourth quarter results up about five point four percent. Again, a bunch of one time stuff was built into that business and industrial group. If I pulled that out, you're probably closer to about one point five to two percent growth for the quarter. Pretty, pretty decent results candidly um for the quarter. Next slide. And actually skip it forward one more. Thank you. So City of Milpitas, annual fiscal year trend, just kind of like what we looked at with the Bradley Burns. This is a little flatter of uh trend lines. Primarily because Measure F is relatively new, um came on board in twenty twenty one. But I would just look at those three years, twenty one, twenty two to twenty three, twenty four. Um seen a little bit of growth in twenty two, twenty three. A little bit of a step down in twenty three, twenty four, but relatively solid. Um similar by calendar year, shows a little cleaner. Um came down a little bit in twenty twenty four compared to twenty twenty three and twenty twenty two. Um but overall, pretty solid growth for the district tax. All right, next slide, please. I'm almost at the finish line. This is a a pretty simplified version projection. Um a little different than what I normally present. When we talk about sales tax because I wanted to roll in Bradley Burns and Measure F together. Or I'm showing actuals for Bradley Burns um for twenty three, twenty four totaled thirty four point eight million dollars between the tax measures. Twenty four, twenty five projection.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt Tracy.
Yes.
We have a lot of background noise coming from your uh from your presentation.
I think it might be Paula Cohen.
Mr. Traeger. Mr. Traeger, I I understand.
Yeah, um can you mute mute Paula?
Yes, your wife is working on that right now. We we would never do that, sir. That patient, patient transfer?
I'm sorry, I don't believe it's coming from me. Okay, better? All right.
Yeah, Tracy, uh I think we're, because we can't get to Paula unless you can text her and ask her to either silence, but are you at a point that you can break? Uh it's it's fairly late. I think you've got maybe four more slides.
Yeah, I'm almost, I'm pretty much done after this one. And Paula just muted, so I think your background noise should be gone.
Thank you.
Yes. So anyway, this is just a quick projection, twenty four, twenty five. Um actually looking at three percent growth largely because of some of that one time uh receipts in the Bradley Burns, stepping it down in twenty five, twenty six. And then um kind of moderate growth in twenty six, twenty seven. Next slide, please. These are just kind of a summary of our forecast considerations. I've talked about most of these already. Let's skip to the next slide. I think I'm pretty much at the end. This is just a reminder about AB twenty eight fifty four. This is a compliance requirement um voted into law. I I think Lucy's pretty uh pretty aware of this, but just wanted to throw this in. These are mandates that local agencies report tax revenue sharing agreements. This um might relate to uh Rivian perhaps. So um anyway, that was just a reminder and I think I'm all done. My next slide is just questions.
Okay, thank you. So is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments on the presentation? I think I see Montemayor, come on up. Welcome.
Yeah. Great presentation, yeah. I just have a couple of sentence comment. I think we're lucky in Milpitas, um we still have the um going to general fund. I think it's from the county, still the the highest sixteen point five percent. Out of the billions of revenue to the net of gross to millions, then we still have that much. And uh yeah, um there are COVID effect, the recession effect. But uh we were there, um not even in the survival, but I think we're maintaining it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Is there anyone else? Speaker cards?
I have no additional public speaker cards, mayor.
Okay, so now we will go to the console and ask for any feedback on the presentation. We have Congressman Lien.
Thank you. Thank you Tracy for the presentation. Um and thank you Lucy for bringing the two um to give presentation on this. Explain to me how the pool works and what kind of percentage do we get out of the pool? Tracy?
Yeah, that is an excellent question. I'm actually glad you asked it. So the pools are kind of interesting. Uh the way it works, there are fifty eight county pools. So every county has a countywide use tax pool. The dollars that go into the pool are pursuant to current law, um online, like out of state, online retail sales or other online sales like chewy dot com and home depot dot com, Nordstrom dot com. They all go into the pool. And um the DMV, third party uh auto sale registrations, they go into the countywide pool too. And that then gets distributed out to the agencies in that county based on your pro rata share of Bradley Burn sales tax for that quarter. It changes every quarter. So for example, your average share in the city of Milpitas um compared to the other agencies in Santa Clara County is about four point nine percent. So the dollars that go into the pool, you will get allocated pool revenues about four point nine percent. For this quarter, for fourth quarter, I mentioned you had uh a couple of crazy taxpayer allocations that really increased your Bradley Burns. And your pool share was higher this quarter. Your pool share for fourth quarter of twenty four was actually five point three percent. I would venture to guess next quarter is going to come back down again. So it will fluctuate based on big Bradley Burns um payments, not only in your city, but in other cities or agencies within the countywide pool.
Okay, so annually we have the um sales tax audit um team. Do they also audit the pools portion as well? That I think that's for Lucy.
You want me to answer that?
Yeah, Tracy, would you answer that, please?
Yeah, happy to. Um it's kind of funky the way that works. So we definitely um are, we're auditing the basic sales tax payments. And we are also looking at the pools for big fluctuations in the pools that would, for example, a big allocation that might go into a pool that should go directly to an agency. We're, we're definitely auditing that um on the behalf of the agencies.
So we don't have a specific annual audit as we do our external financial audit. We have ongoing audits where HCL is constantly looking at trends. And if anything pops up, either plus or minus, they go and they look at it for us and investigate it further. We get quarterly presentations, uh economic development, the city manager's office and finance get quarterly presentations on sales tax.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, thank you, uh Congressman Lien and Lucy. Anyone else? Um okay, well, I think that's it.
All right, Tracy, uh you are free to go. Thank you so much. Your presentation was incredibly good. I think we, I think we've exhausted them.
I I'm sure you are.
Oh, actually, actually, I do have one question.
Of course.
I'm still confused on the internet. Every time we buy something on the internet, do we, do we get that, those taxes?
Tracy, Tracy, let you respond.
Is that that TO?
It's T U T?
You do.
Tracy has already left the building.
Oh, she's gone. Maybe you, maybe you could, maybe you can answer that.
I I. She's here.
I'm here.
She's back, she's back.
I'm here.
Oh, yeah. So when, when, when I buy something, you know, like the other day I bought a C D and I and I still buy CDs, everybody. I still use my C D player. So if I buy a product on the on the um the internet from Amazon, what hap? You know, the taxes, the sales tax, who gets it? Uh us or the shipper or whatever?
It's, it's a really good question. So from the Bradley Burns perspective, it's going into the countywide pool and getting divvied up. Um so going into the pool based on delivery into Santa Clara County and getting divvied up. But from your Measure F perspective, your, your transactions in use tax, that is a destination based tax. And so you are getting that directly. So your point, you're getting that point two five percent directly for that internet transaction.
Oh, that's good. Okay, so that means uh our city will be getting that point two five percent tax.
On your C D, yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you so much. At least it clears.
Tracy and Paula, if you're still on, thank you so much. It's been very helpful. And with that.
I think we have one more.
One more question, no, Jerry, okay. Vice Mayor.
The uh the sales stack, it was not on, on the basis of what kind of goods people buy, but it's uh the buying power of the people that's used for, for the projection. I think I'm not clear.
Yeah, what was the, go ahead, Tracy.
Yeah, I think um so when we're projecting the sales tax growth, I'm basing it on essentially both, Vice Mayor. I'm looking at the business and their sales tax generation and what I'm assuming that business will grow by or not. And then layered on top of that are our economic considerations and those growth factors. So it's kind So it's kind of a bottom-up projection. We start out at the very bottom, business by business by business in the city of Milpitas. We make adjustments. And then on top of that, we layer kind of regional and citywide growth assumptions and statewide growth assumptions that we consider. So it's all of it.
All right. Well, I don't know if you have an answer, so let's uh look at Canada and Mexico, right? You, you, I saw your tariff, when, what and where. But I know when Canada and Mexico was locked with the tariff. So if it's a goods base, if, on the, in your projection, there's a a good, goods component of it, right? Do we have a wild projection, what that 25% will look like on uh the buyers' activity in buying goods? How will it affect us? Do, do we have enough? Even just projection, those tariffs based on those two countries? Because I, I know uh we have a lot of Canadian beer and you know, uh, some uh Mexico goodies that our state or county uh consumes.
We, and I think Tracy referred to this uh obliquely during her presentation. At this point, we know what the tariffs kind of are, depending on what happens tomorrow. And that's a percentage increase, but it really depends on the appetite of the consumer to purchase. It depends on the appetite of the vendor or vendors along, along the um the, the um, how that article or good travels, whether there's an increased cost along the way. And so the, and supply chain has a great deal to do with it. And some may choose to absorb those extra costs, those extra tariff costs. And again, the, the, the consumer at the end of the day may choose not to buy. I mean, some of the estimates for vehicles is uh an additional $12,000. At that price point, somebody may make a decision to have their car last two, three, four years longer. And so we don't know what's going to happen. I think if we, we knew, if Tracy or I or Paula knew, we'd be in Vegas, to be honest with you, betting on, betting on, on dice. Uh, but we have no idea how, how, what the reaction of tariffs is going to be as far as the individual consumer and the consumer in Milpitas. Tracy, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you said it really well. Um, because it, it is truly an unknown and it depends on the appetite of the consumer. With the data that we have to date, the consumer is still hungry. And so at what point will, will they not be able to continue to make those purchases? And the other part of it is, it's really, it's hard for me to discern um goods being sold in Milpitas that are related to, you know, both Mexico and or Canada. So that would be kind of a whole different level of analysis that um would have to go into it.
I guess it's a waiting game. Let's see.
It is frankly a waiting game.
Right, but the purchasing power for consumers are okay. Uh, it's just uh later on, uh, the decision whether to buy higher-priced uh goods.
Which deteriorates their purchasing power. So if I've got a $50,000 car, all of a sudden it's costing me $62,000 car. Depending on what my personal situation is, I'm going to be making, I may very well make a different decision.
Right, but what happens if the proponent of the tariffs is right? I'll buy American car.
One again, I'd be in Vegas.
Vegas is better wagering than, than uh the crystal ball. I tell you.
Uh, because they make an incredible amount of money out of it, but yeah, you're right.
There's an algorithm with those slot machines. I agree with that. Oh, thank you, thank you, Luz. Yeah, it's going to be a waiting game. Hopefully, you know, uh, it is something better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Isn't it, don't the tariffs start? Did they already start? And, but somebody said something about Wednesday?
That there is something about an announcement being made tomorrow.
There's going to be more.
Um, one presumes.
But I'm telling you, it's, this is, it's a domino effect. Everything is interconnected. You, um, building houses, if there's tariffs lumber from Canada, that's going to be a higher tariffs. And then the company is always there to be, there has to be a profit margin. So the company is probably going to come back, cut back, and they cut back by uh um laying people off. And if you lay somebody off, they're not going to have that buying power to buy what they want. So it's, it's all connected. So I, so my projection is that it's, we're, we need to tighten our belt. That's what's going to happen. It's just because everything's connected. And there are going to be some tariff wars. And I heard a scholar, because I like to listen to the NB, um, National Broadcasting Company. And there's, the, when the scholar was saying that, that these tariffs don't really work. I mean, it's, it's, all you're doing is just creating a lot of conflict. And, and, and this, remember, this is a global economy now. It's not just a local economy. It's a global economy, so it's going to have a global effect on everyone. So we better tighten our belt. Okay, so thank you, Tracy.
Thank you very much, Tracy, with that.
Okay, now, um, this was just for information only, so we, we have item five that was pulled from the consent calendar and we have a, a council member Chua who had pulled that item out.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is back to Director Luz. I just have a couple.
Do you have a presentation? I do. It is late though, and I have to appreciate the time that you have already been here, because I know you've been here since early this morning. It's totally up to you. I can answer your questions. Or give a presentation. I think I'd rather answer your questions directly, if you don't mind.
They might have some questions too. How many pages do you have?
Um, it is. I never remember. It's fairly brief. It's probably uh 14 pages.
Oh gee. Okay, I'll ask my questions. Um, it's very simple. Obviously, you have a project plan.
Yes.
Obviously, we started with 3.3 million, correct? For the.
Between the two, it was 4.150.
Right. So I, I'm separating the HRIS because uh you're doing that later. Is that true?
Um, yeah, yeah, but we are actually combining the work, the two, the two session, the two um, the two modules, when I'm talking about modules, the financial, the financial system and the payroll system and the HR, HRIS system are all intimately connected. I actually would not have segregated the two projects. They're generally done.
So you're separating payroll and HRIS?
Uh, we're, we're charging separately. We're probably going to wind up combining the projects because there's really no, when we talk about financial payroll, we're talking about HRIS. So there's, it's very hard to distinguish the conversations because they're so integrated.
Okay, but you're tracking them separately.
Currently, we're tracking.
That's what I'm trying to say. Um, my question is, I don't know if you have it on your pages. I want to see the overall project plan for this project. The reason why I'm asking for that is what is in the project plan that was not or were not delivered? That's why you're asking for $620,000.
There is nothing that's not being delivered. The, the, to be blunt and candid, um, we did not allow enough for project, for external project management services. It is, we did not, it was not budgeted at an appropriate level.
What do you mean?
It should have been, we're, we're effectively using roughly about a quarter of a person, maybe a little bit closer to a half of a person, to do solely project management for this large citywide project.
Wouldn't that be on the overall project plan?
And yes, that would, and it was underestimated at the beginning.
At the beginning in 2020?
22, 23, whenever the original, but I think it was actually 2021. If you want to go back all the way to when we first started talking about it.
If we knew that there was an insufficient fund for the project manager, why was it not changed?
This is the change.
I mean, it took that long to change uh something. If I look at a project plan, I would know that I'm going to be short in uh ET, I mean, labor management. I mean, what I'm saying is project management. Why? Why now? What, what is it that? Um, why it took so long?
It did not.
We should be reviewing the project plan. I mean, constantly.
We are reviewing the project plan. We made a decision back in, I joined the organization in May 2024 and Kelly joined, I think, five, five months prior to that.
But before that, there should have been a project manager.
I cannot speak to things or, or in, or history beyond, be, before me. And, and I won't, I don't, I can't have an opinion. My perspective is.
There is a project manager and it's one of the consultants.
There is a project manager, yes. Yes, it is. And we, we, um, when, we started this project, when I joined, the HRIS system was being done at the same time as the financial system. That is impossible to do in an organization as small as ours. Absolutely impossible to do.
That should have been reflected on the project plan, the overall project plan.
I cannot speak to something that was in place before me.
Can we talk to the project leader? To the one from uh, according to this is.
If I, can you bring up slide 12, please?
My concern is if our project plan is not tight, I could see you coming back and asking for more.
Wait, this is intended to take us through all the way to August 2026?
That's what I said. I need to see the deliverables. What are we not, what have we missed delivering? That's why we're asking for this.
We, if.
This funds.
Whoever is driving the um, if you could bring up slide 12. All right. Here is our key decision points. And as you can see, we, I got here in May and Kelly got here a few months earlier. Both of us have, I have deep experience in this business. I have an undergraduate in IT and I've done this for large organizations.
I am not questioning.
No, no, if you've asked the question, please, please allow me to answer. So, so we are here at August 6, 2024. We increased their level of involvement. So back in August, we were looking to increase the level of involvement. So further on, so we were already looking, August 12th, we asked them to assume all scheduling responsibility. So we were making changes after changes after change all along. And we were looking at, would we need extra money? And it did take us a while to determine that we would. But we were making changes very early to this and we had to, because we simply were not going to be able to deliver the product that you wanted to deliver. The product when I want, go ahead.
My question is, where is the project plan? The timeline and the deliverables?
The deliverables are a financial.
I want to see like.
We can, we can provide that information.
Deliverables.
And if you could bring up slide two, I can provide you the time, timeline. So that is currently the deliverables, the financials and reporting, and then the HR and payroll in 15 months. That is a general overview of a project plan.
Do you have details on this?
What level of details would you like?
To the level that I can understand. To the level that I can understand, where the $620,000 would go?
Sure, we can provide you with that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to make any comments? You know, since this is an increase in 610 and 500, 610, 500, for me, I would like to defer this for when the new city manager comes on board.
I'm going to be very blunt here and forgive me for interrupting you. If this is not approved, we cannot guarantee that this project will be delivered on time. I'm going to make that statement. And I made that statement within the item. I'm just say, making that statement, just to be clear. Even this delay will cause a delay.
So even a couple of weeks will cause a delay?
We will do a couple of weeks, but I, we really need a decision on this because we also need to, to basically make some changes on how we ma, on how we manage this. Because this will take Kelly and I away from our day-to-day duties and we're already working.
Well, so are you saying that?
70, 80 hours a week.
Are you saying that if you don't pass this today, the funding will run out? I mean, the project will not?
We will come back in, in May, given that first opportunity. So we'll come back in May.
Well, like I said, I, I was, uh, I wanted to just hold off until the new uh manager comes on board and do an assessment. Um, but if you're saying that, that's not, that you're not.
Uh, all I'm, all I'm doing is providing you advice as a professional who has done this for, quite frankly, a long time.
Okay, uh, let's have a council member Chua.
I cannot make a decision on this until I see the, where is the $620,000 going?
Sure, we can provide.
To that level.
Of course.
And you can bring that back on the next council meeting.
Or is there any other request? Because if we, from councils?
I, I, I agree with that, the next council meeting, but we'll have a, have to have a consensus. Or do we need a consensus or? Uh, for going down the line? Oh, we have council member Lynn?
Yes, Director Luz, when you say you cannot wait, what kind of impact does it have on your department and the HR department if this comes back in May?
We would have to dedicate more time to project management. There, to be again, quite candid and quite blunt, the only person or persons who have a skill set to manage a project of this size and scope is me. And I have a full-time job already. And Kelly, to some extent.
And if I might, I'll just put a finer point on that. Luz and her team are doing the, currently doing the budget as well. And as you, we all know, that's a very heavy lift. So this project is to be able to manage the ERP project so that they can focus on the budget. And Luz is also taking on procurement at the moment because she has that background. And at the moment, we don't have a procurement officer in the city. And that impacts every, every department, particularly Public Works. I think about 60% of the purchase orders that you process are from the Public Works Department. So there, there is a definite impact and a very specific and.
Plus the actual technical work in transitioning. I will be further candid and blunt. When I joined the organization, it was readily clear to me that the project approach was to be basically lift and shift the processes and the business approaches to what we had, what was formerly well, Milpitas. If you remember, every time we ask you, 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 you get a request, we get a request from you. We always say it's going to take us time to get there. There has been an extraordinary lack of integration of systems and an extraordinary inability to track these systems appropriately. The Tyler system is meant to do that, which is why we have a July 1st, 2025 go live. This puts that 20, July 1st, 2025 in peril. So I do wish that I had been advised of this before because we could have brought this forward in more detail. It is unfortunate that it's being brought forward here on the dais. I appreciate that and I thank you for the question. But in these cases, we, it is much better to use the, the briefings that we have with all, all council members to ask for that additional information. It is remarkably difficult, difficult to give you a level of detail that you're looking for if we don't know what that level of detail is, which is, until we meet you at the dais. So I just want to make that statement. I can guarantee you that we will be in peril of missing July 1st. We will continue to be in peril of having systems that simply do not talk to each other. We will continue to be in peril to have 20 different spreadsheets, five different systems, all talking all different languages. It is a United Nations of nonsense. And so the difficulty here for me as an individual is that this will likely land on my lap.
Mayor, so let me have a council member Chua, I would say.
I understand your, your, your rationale. But on the other hand, you're asking, number one, I didn't know you're acting as project lead. You. How, how could, I mean, how could a project go on with a project lead that is not 100% on, on the project? It just news to me now that I thought that there is a project leader, project manager, if you will, from this, this consultant.
They provide.
And you're telling me that you, you and, you and HR are the project leads, which, what is it?
We are the business owners of this, of our respective systems. So we have to take that leadership position when implementing those systems. That's very straightforward. That's the way ERP usually works.
I understand.
You bring external assistance to do project management. You do that for larger projects, of which this is. This is a citywide project. This, at the end of the day, will affect every single person who works for the city of Milpitas, and frankly, every resident and every business who does, who, anybody who, every stakeholder for the city. There is absolutely no question in my mind that we have to do this, and we have to do this well. But again, I will be very candid. The original thought process in all of this was to basically lift whatever processes they had, the lack of integration, and then simply shift it over to a niftier system, which wouldn't even have made it faster.
I understand that. I understand the, the goal, the result.
Mm-hmm.
But I still need to justify, in my mind, where that $620,000 is going.
I will.
And if that answered, I cannot approve this request.
I will bring that back. If, if there, if that is the wish of the rest of the council, then I will, I will, of, of a majority of the council, we will bring that back May 6. But I would beg of you to please provide me any other questions that you have in advance so we can research them and be prepared.
Thank you. So anyone else? Just, um, did you have a question?
No, David, that's okay.
We have a council member, a vice mayor.
This question is for the city manager. Why are we in this situation?
Do.
I'm, I'm sorry, why are we?
Why are we in?
Why are we in this crunch situation with this project?
I don't know that it's a crisis. It's just that we.
It's a crunch.
Yeah, it is a crunch. As, as we've, I, my, my take on it is, as we've gone to implement the project, that like anything, it has become clearer as we have gone along. Luz, the, the slide that Luz put up showed that going all the way back to July, we started asking the managers to do more work because we were not just doing a lift and shift over. We are completely overhauling the city's, uh, projects. Um, this was started under a different, uh, finance director. I'm not trying to throw her under the bus. However, it was not scoped correctly. I think Luz has said that a couple of times, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when was this project coined? Is it, uh?
We are going, we are planning at this point to go live July 1st.
No, I mean, so you came in.
I came May 2024.
Right.
You had already engaged with Barry Dunn.
Who was the brainchild of this?
By me?
Whoever started this project that you inherited?
Yes.
And you came.
It goes back to 2021 or 22.
2021 is when you originally started talking about it.
It was initiated under, if you want, name, it was under, issue initiated under Ashwini and the former finance director, Lauren.
Okay, so we're here.
I, I would have taken a completely different approach. I would never have done HR and finance together. It is impossible to do those two together, simply because they are so closely integrated with a small staff of 30 in the finance team and nine in HR, who are taking the major brunt of redoing this, even with clean data, which we do not have. It is a lift. It is a lift. And it is also challenging to do that, where so many other responsibilities have to be completed by the same individuals. So I'm just being really clear, and I'm just being really candid.
I am. So.
Of course.
Just, just give me something. Where did the $650,000 go?
We calculated the hours that it would take to finish this all the way through August of 2026, because we planned to go live, uh, Janu, uh, July 1st of 2026 with the HRIS system, which is brand new. The city has never had a human resource information system before. So we're starting from paper, and much of our finance is also starting from paper and spreadsheets. So the difficulty here is.
You got my vote.
Thank you.
Well, if we keep on blaming each other, you know, where did this go? This came from here. Something is going to be delayed. And if it's just, you know, if we do not accept the explanation where the extra dollar came about, I will go, and then we, we need more information on that, uh, that will delay this project. It will be a counterintuitive to what we have started in 2021. That's just my vote. So if I'm satisfied, you know, it's a new project, it came from generation that pre, preceded all of us, and we're just continuing it. It's so apparent that we need it. It's so apparent that we'll have to spend on it anyway. And here's a, a hands-on professional in front of us who says, this is what we need. And, and what else do we, do we need? But, but my one vote, I'm, I'm fine. Let's spend that $650,000, have it run by July, and end of story.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I do want to refer back to page two on this. Um, so I, I, this is what, uh, cause this, this is what is on this paragraph. It says, as noted above, the original Barry Dunn contract included 1,430 support hours to be allocated for this project. As of December 31, 2024, the city has used 872 hours of the avail, of the available Barry Dunn time with 558 remaining support hours. With the extension of the, the HRIS, HRIS and payroll cut over occurring in July 2026, staff estimates using 150 support hours per month. With 20 months required for this extension, staff estimates an additional 2,442 support hours will be required for a total estimate, estimated increase of 610,500, almost a little over half a million dollars, resulting in an approximate 53% FTE of Barry Dunn project management support over the implementation of the financial HRIS and payroll models. As in the original contract, travel expenses will be billed as incurred. So it, so I'm just wondering why it is, is it because we, we don't have this, if, if they come over here and help us, why do we, um, still need more money for them to?
We'd need more hours. They were, they were billed at one, they, this was under scope.
So it was underestimated, is what the, the bottom line is what you're saying.
Underestimated the number of hours. It made a presumption about retaining the same business processes, which would have been problematic, because in the new, that you're talking about a legacy system on the financial side, it's 30 years old. So the underlying structure of that, of those transactions have transformed, simply through GASB regulations. So all the stuff that we do off-book, which is with these ancillary spreadsheets that surround us like Saturn, the moons of Saturn, um, are done simply because in 30 years, this system, the system that we currently have has not kept up. Then you add adding a brand-new HRIS system that has never been deployed in an organization before.
Okay, so we, we still have, that we still have those other hours. I, I would like, for me, my, I would like to, um, refer to Councilmember Chua's, um, recommendation for the next meeting. But, uh, you have, did you, I think you have your hand, you have your hand raised?
Me, yes.
Hanlin, I mean, Councilmember Lynn.
Oh, Councilmember Lynn, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I, I just want to voice, and I'm, together with Vice Mayor, this is important, and there are other issues that our city needs. Um, this is one of them. And if you are going to say, this is over the budget by $600,000, look at what we are about to do. And, you know, for the votes that we voted today, come together. That's the money saved to spend on this, and this is far more important to get it done on time, in time, because it is important for the finance department and HR to get things the right way. When we are up here behind the dais asking for report, we demand, okay, get us this kind of detailed report. How are they going to do that with very little time unless they have the right, uh, software and the right things to get it to us? So that's another vote from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn.
Please.
Councilmember Chua.
The detail, I'm not asking for the detail. If I really do want to ask, I'm just asking for the overall plan. You're. That this is for, this is for the project leadership. And we, like the mayor said, we still have 558 remaining. All, all I ask is, what are the deliverables for this $620,000?
Can I get Jessica, or whoever is managing this, to pull up slide four, please? So we provided a timeline, which is slide two, and you have this presentation in your book. This is the current implementation progress solely for the financial modules. That includes general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable, fixed assets, budgeting, procurement, project management, project ledger, all the other ancillary costs, all the integration of reporting, all, and all of the work that we have to do to take all those different systems, all those different spreadsheets, and put them into the system. So this is, this is, if you want a, a project plan, this is pretty much it. I can't, I don't know how much else.
Where's the part that says this is specific for the project lead? Where's the part that says this is specific? This is a, an overview?
Yes.
Where's the part that says this is for the project leads? This is where my $620,000 is going?
Please flip to the next page. This is a sample month, a project activity is during one month. So this is a level of details that we have. These are the levels of meetings that we have. Please flip to the next page. This is what February looks like. Anything that's colored means that they are onsite, helping us with this, along with our Tyler Systems folks. Please flip to the next page. Explain, uh, gosh, no, uh, slide nine, please. This is March. All those colors mean somebody sitting in a room. This is anywhere from one to 40 people sitting in a room, learning about the system, and their project, they are helping us project management. They're helping us schedule this. They're helping us when we have decision points. Please slide to the next page. Let's look at April. And this is not even half filled out. Starting next week, actually starting Monday, because I worked Monday, I was, I spent all day working on the purchasing module. I'm preparing that, because I don't have the skill set in-house to do that kind of technical work.
And I'll just add that this is the level of detail that we didn't have at the beginning of the project, which is why it wasn't scoped correctly. Now, as we've gotten into the project, we, we can go day by day, line by line, to look at the, the work that's being done. And because we were burning through the hours more quickly, we're, we changed this, basically, we changed the scope, and that requires more, and more money for that. And the, the, um, paragraph that the mayor read, I think, is key, because it, it shows the analysis that went through. These are the hours that we've used. These are the hours that we have left over. Yes, there's 558, but we're know, we know that we're burning through those, as you can see on the calendar here, at a much quicker pace than was, was anticipated at the beginning. But that's just because, um, like any project, it became more clear as we actually did the work.
Yep. If you flip to page 12, that provides you the decision points. And this has also been presented at the, at the, um, finance subcommittee level to Mayor Montano and Councilmember Chua. So, and that this, so we've discovered this as early as August 6. We were hoping to be able to get through it with some savings. We cannot. We may realize some savings at the end, but it'd rather be safe than sorry. I, I, yeah. If there's additional, if you want to look through this presentation and tell us what additional detail you would like, I am ready, willing, and able to do that work. But I must ask that we, we bring this to closure at our next meeting, no matter what direction we go in.
I will, I will wait for.
Or tonight, if possible.
No, I will wait for the next council meeting.
Thank you. So, uh, I'm just concerned, because you, you mentioned 2021. Is it that staff is not, um, was there buy-in in the project? Or I'm not sure what, what?
I, I can't, again, I can't speak to 2021 activities.
This didn't have anything to do with buy-in. It had to do with getting the project underway and, and actually working on it. And frankly, having a finance director who's done this before several times and has the, uh, expertise to know what is needed.
I have done this both as a CFO and as an IT person, as an information systems person. I've led these efforts. I've been part of a large team. I've done it with a $10 billion organization. I've done it with a $2.5 billion organization. My expertise is unquestioned. I don't get generally too arrogant, but it needs to be understood.
I, there's no question about your expertise. I know, I know you. I mean, but as, as a representative of the residents and as being responsible, fiscally conservative, responsible on the tax dollar, I need to know where the funds are going.
I appreciate.
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
What deliverables? When, when, when you have spent the $620,000, what did we get?
The presumption is, is that we will have a financial system, a payroll system, and an eight human resource information system that are integrated, that talk to each other, that we have reduced the time that it takes to get this council information to make decisions for that community, those residents and those business owners and those stakeholders.
I understand.
So that's what we expect. That's the deliverable we will get.
I understand.
But we can't do that with only 24 hours in a day.
I understand that, too. I'm sorry that you have to go through this and play the project lead as well. I didn't know that. I thought we have a project leader from Brad, whatever, that consultant thing. And I still need that, that, those deliverables and the overall project plan. I mean, it's up to the council, but I would rather wait to have those and understand exactly what the needs are before I vote, before I approve this. But it's up to the majority of the council. I would rather have this on the next, uh, council meeting.
And what day, what day is that?
The next city council meeting is April 15th.
15th.
April 15th.
Councilmember Lam.
Um, Luz, let me ask you this question. Um, if you, if, if you present on the next council meeting, would it cause any delay on your book?
We still have hours left in the contract, so we will, we will continue as if this will be approved, because we have no choice. Right now, we are at April, May, June. We are at three months. These three months are the most intensive months. If you would pull up April, please, that is slide 10. Okay, this represents, as of Monday, we started testing this system. So that's testing the system thoroughly. How was it configured? Does it reflect your configuration? How do the workflows work? How many roles do you have? How, this role does the city manager have? What, what role do I have? What are the security setups? How do I deal with any cybersecurity issues? How are they integrated with all the other software that we have? So this is, this is where the rubber hits the rug.
Okay. So, Sansa, your answer is, if you present to the council on the next meeting, you would not delay anything?
I, I have to be honest with you. If, if we, if the, the Barry Dunn is a business, if they sense that this is not going to go their way, they will start pulling people. I'm not, I'm going to tell you right now that I don't think they'll do it by then, but I do think we also have to have an honest commitment and an honest discussion about this.
Well, let me rephrase that.
Of course.
Um, by the next council meeting, you ran out of funds?
No, we won't run out of funds.
To pay them.
We, we are running out of hours, but we will be running out of hours.
Okay.
That's, because the count that we have is through December. So I just want to make sure we're burning through them a lot.
Um, yeah, for me, I'm satisfied with Luz's, um, presentation. Um, yeah.
So can I, can I? So can I, can I piggyback? So when you said, when you say we will not run out of hours by the April 15th?
No.
Right?
No, uh, no.
Um, yeah, for me, either way is fine. I have no strong feelings one way or the other. You know, really, it's, it's, I'm satisfied, it is. You know, I think two, two, two weeks from now, we're going to approve this anyway. So, so... Yeah, that's fine.
And then just, let's just vote, let's go home.
Mayor, we still need to take public comment.
So let's have public comment.
Yeah, I believe it would have been simpler without those long discussions. I think the presenter and the council can conclude. I think I understand all the reasons behind each one of you. I, I, I hear it very well. So for tonight, resolvable, or next meeting, resolvable? It's all, it's up to you guys, thank you. Well, if I'm with you, if... The council anyway, to decide. I know it's, it's tough. I'm not siding anyone. I may side, but I may side for discontinuance of the delay of the project. I don't want the delay of the project to be necessary, thank you.
Thank you for your input, you know, thank, thank you.
Luz, one more time. If we, if you dis, if you present the information on the next meeting, will there be any delay on your project?
No.
Okay?
I will add to that, though, however, I'll put in one last plea. The next two weeks are going to be incredibly busy with the budget. We have a budget study session tomorrow. We'll, we're, we are trying to stay focused on the budget as much as possible. In the next couple of weeks, next month, you'll be onboarding a new city manager as well, and that's a terrific amount of work for staff as well to onboard that new person. You'll all remember when you were new council members, it's sort of like that, when you have a new person coming onboard. So even though it won't cause a delay in the project, having this out of the way will be a significant relief to both the finance department and the city manager's office that are currently under a terrific amount of stress, trying to get a budget put together and, and to make presentations to the council that are clear. And I, in all honesty, I think that's your, should be your higher priority if you're concerned with both the staff and the residents of the community.
We have Council, Vice Mayor.
All right, I will make this motion not because staff is so burdened, right? I, I will make this motion because it's practical to my thoughts. So I move to approve and authorize the city manager or designee to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Berry Dunn, MacNeil &amp; Parker LLC for enterprise resource planning consulting services in the amount of 610,500, with additional authority to approve the changes of up to 10%.
I don't think we're going to use it, but you can remove that, if you feel comfortable.
All right. All right, I'll, I'll restate my motion. As a compromise, I think we're going to get an approval tonight. I move to approve and authorize the city manager or designee to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Berry Dunn, MacNeil &amp; Parker LLC for enterprise resource planning consulting services in the amount of 610,500.
Period.
Period.
Okay, there was, so it was seconded by, by Councilmember Leon and moved by Vice Mayor. So, well, let's take a vote.
Vice Mayor Barba Dyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
No.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Leon?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that two weeks is not going to make much of a difference. It's gonna, we just have to move, move forward and bite the bullet. But I really feel that we need to start, as, as Councilmember Chua has mentioned, there needs to be transparency, because this was like a surprise. And I know that we need to get this done. So let's move forward.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're moving on to announcements and future agenda items. So city manager, do you have any announcements?
I have just one announcement. As you're all aware, tomorrow night, we'll be here again in the chambers for budget study session. We will start at 5:00 PM, and we look forward to continuing that conversation with the council. You may notice there's been a slight modification to the chambers down in the front by Luz, that we've added a table there for the staff to present the budget. Typically, budget, budget study sessions are held in one of the other buildings, so that we're all around in the table. We will have all of the directors here tomorrow, the executive staff, and then those who are making the presentation will sit at the table so that they can answer questions from the council. We look forward to seeing you again tomorrow.
Okay, city council members, any announcements? We have Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. For, for the ask, I would like to create the Mopitas, an initiative to create the Mopitas Community Concert Choir, based on the feedback from, from the residents. And it's going to be residence-based. It will be run just like the Mopitas Community Concert Band. It will be driven by, by the residents. And the one thing that, that would be the ask for the city is for marketing and also a place to, to rehearse. I would like to put that on the calendar or list.
Do we need a consensus?
Calling for consensus, Vice Mayor Barba Dyo.
I agree.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Leon?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Anyone else? Let's have Councilmember Lamb.
Yeah, Mopitas residents can now dispose their household battery in City Hall first floor. There is a plastic container which people can just drop off their old household battery. So I'd like to thank the city manager and assistant city manager and public works staff for implementing this service.
Okay. So thank, I, anyone else? Thank you for that. So we have Councilmember Barba Dyo? No. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, it, it developed during the meeting. So two points, I would like to, and I don't know how to do it. I would like to, to review again with the council our bingo ordinance. As I said, you know, it's becoming popular and, and there's, there's involvement of the community as well as, as a good amount of money. So I would like to see and, and have a review of that ordinance, what we can do to enhance it, to improve it, to make it more transparent. Secondly is, I do, I would like to develop a policy with regards to projects like what we had, right? As I said, I'm fine with bygones be bygones, but moving forward, I think it's a good start to, to make a policy regarding a project. You know, the, the more tight the information for a certain project is, you know, it will avoid later on discrepancies, being under budget and, and under staff. And, and I think, you know, we just need to learn and, and put things behind. So those two, I don't know how I'm going to word it, but a policy with regards to future projects, especially those being managed, and, you know, the bingo. So I, I think I will put Chris to work, how will I word that, Chris? How, how will...
So the first item seems straightforward. It would be an item for pride, to be put on prioritization for updates and improvements to the bingo ordinance, I think specifically to enhance it and to increase transparency, is what you said.
Yes.
So I think that would be the first item, if you wanted to propose it for consensus vote.
So propose.
Let's do a consensus vote on that first.
For consensus, Vice Mayor Barba Dyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Leon?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Okay, second one.
Chris?
So for, for the other one, I'm trying to figure out, because there are distinctions between councils' purview and the state manager's purview, and particularly with a new state manager coming on, is what's being contemplated for prioritization is a city council policy about information to be brought forward to the city council at the time of contract approval or something like that? That, and the development of such a policy?
No, it's, it's earlier than that. It's our, our policy. It's our policy to, to be, to guide us later on if we have some future projects, not, not what, what you present to the council. For example, I, we have a project that is going to be managed by a project team. So we want to make sure that it's done properly, both in budget, in expectations, in timeframe, when we start the project, so that we don't encounter this kind of problem. And whether, who will implement that or be on that timeframe when, you know, the proponents are no longer serving the city, it's just easy to, to, to just enforce the project. So I, I know Matt will, will know how to word that.
Oh, there we go. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Matt Keno. As a start for this conversation, one thing that we could produce is an informational memo that outlines the project management phases that we enter into and the checks and balances that we have internally for our projects. Most of, most of our projects are managed by our engineering team in public works, but we do have projects, such as we just talked about, that are managed by other departments as well. And so what we could do for this item is we could outline what our, what our project managers typically go through, the processes, the checks and balances, the justifications that they use for cost increases. So for example, a lot of times, project manager will just go ahead and ask for more money, and the first thing you ask them is, well, why do you need the money? And have you looked at your scope of work first? And a new project manager will kind of look at you wide-eyed and maybe not have done that yet. And so there's a lot of common practices that we have for managing projects that we could outline in an info memo to get this conversation started. And once you have that, there may be other ideas that you, that come out of that that you want to see us improve and work on.
Okay. And then we use that platform whenever we have a project to make sure that, you know, this HRIS and that other word, you know.
If I may, Vice Mayor, what I, yeah, in addition to the comments that the Assistant City Manager made, I, I hear you saying that there's a need for a type of a framework and maybe some criteria or guidelines from the council on these are the things that you would like to see in project management, so that there's a little bit of consistency and also clarity, as well as transparency in the, in the way that projects are brought to you and, and brought to you for review before they're ever approved. So, and we can certainly do that, and of, of, for, for Matt, I'll say, therefore, sorry, for Assistant City Manager Keno, I think this is a perfect opportunity for him, having come from that background in public work. So that, that's, you know, he, he can do that backward and forward.
Like a flowchart policy, if you mean, right? So that, you know, we avoid what just happened today with regards to uncertainties and, and crunch.
Thank you, and it could be a good document to train new managers on as well for things that the council expects to see if items are brought forward in the future, when items are brought forward in the future.
For us to learn, yeah.
I'm always about coining names, so we'll just call this the Mopitas Way, and that will be project way, so...
Or the highway.
The highway, yeah.
The Mopitas Highway.
My way or the highway? Okay, okay. Anyone else? I, I do, I do want to say, I was at the Caesar Chavez Plaza the other day, and I seen, you have the Caesar Chavez Plaza, and you have the Martin Luther King plaque, right? Is it Martin Luther King plaque? Probably Renee would know, she's there all the time. But I would like to propose to put Larry Elyon and Gandhi. I know right now it's, probably can't afford it, but in the future, but at least to just put that out there for the future. You know, you have the plaque at the Caesar Chavez Plaza. So, anyway, I'd like consensus on that.
Vice Mayor Barba Dyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Leon?
No for me until we are having that deficit fixed.
Well, that's what I just said. I said, when we have the money, okay?
Mayor Montano?
Yes. Then we have also, William Lamb has his hand raised.
Yes. There's a sentence that bothers me on the Mopitas City Code of Conduct.
I brought this up already, you know?
Yes, there's one sentence that bothers me, that it reads, refrain from using your joint devices while on the city council dais. Most of us are using your joint devices. So should we rephrase that, or...
What are your, what are your suggestion?
What do you suggest?
What do you suggest?
I suggest modify that sentence.
Okay, how?
Refrain from using your joint devices improperly while on the city dais.
Did you say improperly?
Yeah.
What, what is considered improperly?
That's for us to judge. We could delay it if you want, but I have no power.
Yeah, so when this came up previously, it will, it will require a, an amendment to the council handbook, so we can put that at some point, at some future point, on an agenda the council desires, and there may be some other adjustments that need to be made to the handbook.
So...
So we can have that discussion in the future, I think.
What was your recommendation?
My recommendation is to add one word into that sentence.
To do what now? I can hear you.
Oh. My suggestion is to add one word into that sentences, that sentence.
And what is that word?
Improperly, inappropriate.
Improper, okay. Yeah, well, for me, I had wanted, you guys all know how, what I had wanted, no, no electronic devices on the dais. If it's an emergency, step outside and take the call out there. But I didn't get a consensus for that.
Well, because your joint devices can mean computer...
Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember, we're starting to get into a discussion of this item.
So let me have, Councilmember Chua, you have your hand raised.
I think this is already a discussion. We need to put this on the, on the agenda as an item to upgrade or enhance or change the handbook.
Okay, so let's get a vote on that.
Yeah, for consensus, Vice Mayor Barba Dyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Leon?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I, and I.
Oh, we have Councilmember Chua?
I forgot. It's been mentioned to me that one of the fire stations does not have a flagpole. Is that true?
Is that true? Flagpole, you know, the, and, and.
Good evening, council. Good evening, good evening, Mayor Jason Skunover, Fire Chief. All of the fire stations should have functioning flagpoles. I'm not, I'm not aware.
Please check if there, if the, the flag is not there because it's worn out or, you know, replace it if we, we don't have one.
We do routinely check all of the flagpoles and flags, but we'll.
She's taking pictures.
Okay.
For me.
What station is it?
She, she didn't, I didn't ask, I forgot, yeah.
Happy to follow up on that.
They're, they're longtime residents and they love to see the flagfalls in, in your stations.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, this meeting, seeing no any, no more comments, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.